Welcome to the school committee meeting of Wednesday, July 22, 2020. Once again, we are coming to you remotely. So first order of business of tonight is approval of minutes and we do have a few sessions to approve. First is the business meeting from June 17th. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Dave. Seconded by Joan. Any discussion on those minutes? All in favor?
Aight.
Right, unanimous, great. And then we do have three sets of executive session minutes and all of us were in those executive sessions. So I think we could approve them all together. They are from June 17th at 6:15 PM, June 23rd at 3 PM, and then July 16th at 10 AM. So is there a motion to approve those executive session minutes? Thank you, and Maria, is there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you, Dave. Any discussion on those? All in favor? Right. Unanimous, great. Thank you, everybody. And Dr. Thompson, do we have any correspondence this evening?
We do not.
Okay, so moving right along to our warrant report from the warrants that David Patania has signed.
Thank you. So last week I signed warrants in the amounts of $6,634.95, $760.26, $3,680.80, $82,019.78, $382.67, $14,046.48, $757.38, $12,754.12, $35.92, $1,710.61, per grand total of $716,447.9.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions from the committee on those warrants that you signed? Alright, thank you. So at this time on our agenda, it is public forum. And as we have been doing since March, public forum is accessible through an email address, Just check the email address and at this time we do not have any emails that came in to be read at public forum. But just to remind the community that they can email us at that address. And anything that we receive between now and next Wednesday, the 29th, will be read at public forum on 29th. Dr. Thompson, any announcements?
At this time, we have one in regards to the MSBA, the middle school, but we'll do that as part of the MSBA middle school update.
Okay, great. So we do have an appearance this evening. We have two guests from the community with us tonight, Kate Sibing Dunn and Jenny Wu, who are here as part of Progress Norwood's cultural competency team. And they wanted a chance to share some thoughts and engage with the school committee. In the packet, you will see that they have shared with us some figures and statistics that they're going to be referring to. So that is in your packet. But Kate and Jenny, welcome. We're happy to have you join us tonight and I will turn it over to you at this time.
Great, thank you so much. Thanks, thank you all for having us and giving us a little bit of time. We are going to be reading from a statement, just so you understand why it looks like we are reading from a statement. I'm Kate Sibing Dunn and I'm here with Jenny Wu. The two of us have kids both at the Oldham, Little Mustangs, and the Callahan, actually. Both Jenny and I are part of Progress Norwood's cultural competency team. I'll share a little bit about what Progress Norwood is, but first we want to acknowledge the crisis the district is facing with the pandemic. We are constantly watching for information that impacts school returns and can only imagine the amount of preparation and stress this challenge requires of you all. We truly appreciate your dedication. We have many teachers who contribute to Progress Norwood initiatives and know that they are particularly worried. We know many who are also parents, many teachers who are also parents, who are not only essential to our community, but to their own families. So our purpose here today is to support those teachers and our schools now and in the future as they serve the entire community. So Progress Norwood is a group made up of volunteers. Our goals are to reach out to the community in three areas: civic engagement, environmental activism, and cultural competency. Norwood has a well-established history of community involvement and pitching in for each other. And we are grateful to have collaborated with many involved groups and people for varying causes that are important to this town. Our cultural competency team, we have goals and it's basically around educating ourselves and building relationships with those who want to strengthen the community with stronger cultural competency. We define that as the ability to understand and respectfully respond to the perspective of others. This includes, but is not limited to, issues of race, age, disability, spirituality, ethnicity, and gender identity. So it is with this goal in mind that brings us here today. The recent murder of George Floyd and the subsequent global awareness it has spurred has elevated the long unresolved discussion of systematic racism. We have been moved to see citizens of Norwood show up for justice at a peaceful rally organized by an NHS grad, as well as the town-sponsored vigil for peace and justice and a following community listening session. What we heard is the students at the vigil and subsequent listening session tell us about experiences with peers, teachers, and curriculum which caused harm. We are concerned about outdated elements of the curriculum and lack of sufficient funding for professional development in culturally responsive teaching. We support the district's strategic plan and policy updates the school committee is pursuing. We know that teachers alone shouldn't be responsible for tackling what a community problem, what is a community problem to solve. So we offer whatever help we can as community members to continue this work even during and especially after the pandemic.
Hi, thanks again for having us and thank you for all the work that you do in our schools and for keeping our children in mind. So we recognize that the landscape of the upcoming school year presents a host of variables that are out of everyone's control. And again, appreciate the work that you are putting as a district during this time. But in this time of change, readjustment, and uncertainty, there is an understandable desire to like go back to normal. I share that desire. I long for a time when we can come together, see our children with their friends and teachers, and live without the fears caused by the current public health crisis. However, I ask if the previous concept of normal, did it serve all members of the community? As a town, Norwood is predominantly white, which is defined by 83.2%, with a growing percentage of non-white students, which is over 37%. The difference in demographics between students and their educators poses a challenge and an opportunity for the town to adjust to our increasingly diverse community. It's evident through the students' testimonials at the vigil and at the listening session that normal practices have hurt some. Also, as evidenced by district data, and here I am referencing figures one through four that you have given, been given ahead of time, which shows the disproportionate disciplinary measures and differences in achievement along racial lines. There are significant disparities among some group of students. And I'm sure that you know, this is a trend that occurs throughout the state and the nation. But I ask as a town, can we come together and strive to be the exception? Let's work to redefine normal and continue to make progress. With that in mind, we hope that in the midst of planning for this fall, that the district does not lose focus on continuing its work and increasing culturally responsive practices as outlined in the strategic plan. It makes sense that we would meet our community needs as it sits currently with best practices.
So again, we know that you are addressing these issues in some respects and our aim is to underscore their importance and to offer support. So we know professional development takes resources and that adopting a new curriculum is an involved process and that the district has a goal to diversify the faculty. We hope that you will keep these priorities at the forefront as these are places that can be pivotal for student experience in school culture. As a white parent of white children, I know that culturally responsive training for our educators is a worthy investment for our kids of color as well as white students. Race-conscious teaching versus ignoring race is not only necessary for the well-being of students of color, but it is transformative for white students as well. We know that children notice race and racism from a young age. If we deny and deflect that, we are sending the message that there is shame around issues of race. If we deny or shame those observations, we will fail them as they try to form meaningful relationships with people of different races. This hurts our communities in the end. So prioritizing teacher training on current knowledge in this area is a must.
We see the burden that you all must bear in a normal academic year. And we see that there are additional hurdles as a result of the pandemic. I just want to say that this is not a burden that you, the school committee administrators and teachers must bear in isolation. This is the time to bring additional voices within the community who are fully invested in not only making recommendations, but are willing to engage as partners in the work to make all students feel safe and supported this academic year and beyond. I see that the district has been surveying parents as a part of its reopening planning and perhaps this could be adopted to establish a diverse council of stakeholders, meaning teachers, parents, guardians, and older students, committed to working together to drive cultural competency initiatives across the district and in independent schools. Norwood is a community of caring people who know how to roll up their sleeves and help each other. Let's be the pace setters, leverage our strengths, and care for those who suffer as a result of the pandemic as well as through our past missteps. We know that many of our educators are passionate about these issues and we understand that they need clear policy and brave leadership and we look forward to helping how we can.
Again, we are not here to prescribe the solutions for classrooms, but instead to say pursuing them consistently is vitally important and that you will have the support of many people in the community. We know that many of our teachers are making these efforts. However, we understand that due to historical patterns, the district has not always prioritized evolving this issue. In recent years, there have been strides made and we hope to continue. A continued focus on policy and consistency throughout the district will result in richer academic and social experiences for both primary and secondary kids. We know from experience that these kids need to be addressed at an early age. Our hope is that as curriculum is updated and equity policies are enacted, teachers and administrators will have the foundational support that they need to move forward. I'd like to close with a hypothetical based on an exchange one of my children had that I think illustrates the challenge and opportunity we are speaking to. How will our teachers proceed when faced with kids of all ages processing what they are seeing happening in our world? Children bring their own perspectives with them to school. They will bring differing and sometimes opposing viewpoints. We know that kids don't always get the facts right and need correct information. How should a second grade teacher handle a discussion between students? One asserts that black lives matter and the other that all lives matter. What if the kids are high schoolers? What if both kids are white? What if the pair is mixed racially? How a school handles these types of interactions and topics will be consequential both for the kids involved and the future of our community. Our community. The status quo might have us ignore and move on because frankly, it has been unclear what the answers are. It's tough. Teachers, parents, and communities need new tools and skills in order to give our kids the chance for a just and equitable future. Whether we're virtual or in person with masks, our kids are coming back to school aware of the crises, plural, happening in the country on some level. We hope that with your continued leadership, we can work together to advocate for needed resources, partners within the community, and guidance to properly meet the challenge. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Kate and Jenny, for being here, for writing, you know, which is clearly a thoughtful and comprehensive statement to share with us and for providing the figures that you've done some research on. At this time, I will open it up to the committee to see if there's any questions or responses based on the statement that we've just heard. Dave, hi.
Yeah, thank you very much for coming and presenting. It's very important to me as well. You have my full support. So you know, I look forward to working with the guys for whatever we can do to integrate this.
Thanks.
Thank you, David. Is there other feedback questions from the committee or Dr. Thompson, Dr. Wyatt at this time?
Yeah, I just want to say that I too support this initiative wholeheartedly. I think Jeannie and Katie have, you know, enunciated the problems really well. What I would appreciate regarding the curriculum work that we may need to do is whatever feedback you've got, I would love to see sort of what areas, you know, was the feedback targeted around a specific grade level or a specific content area? The more information I have on where our curriculum falls down for kids, the better we can respond to that. I mean, it's important for you guys to know that when we adopt new curriculum, we do a civil rights check on the curriculum to make sure that it's, that it's, you know, well-balanced in terms of the images presented in the curriculum and in terms of making sure that it represents our various cultures as best as possible. So that's part of the regular process. But no doubt, we can, we can do better and the more specifics we have around our weak areas, the better we can respond. So that's, that's my request and I'm, I'm, I'm fully supportive of this initiative. It's critical. Yeah.
Yeah, I would like to thank you for recognizing the work that we have done. We did partner with the, with the Anti-Defamation League three years ago. We started a student-run organization, the World of Difference. Unfortunately, a lot of their work was planned after a whole fall and winter of training that was going to be highlighting in our middle school this spring. And unfortunately, that did not come to fruition. Our work is continuing with PD around this and using a cultural competency piece to some of our curriculum work going forward. So we, we are making progress, but you are absolutely right in that we have, this is not a normally challenged year we're looking at. It's an extremely challenging year, but we are committed to improving and growing as a district. So thank you for recognizing the work that we've done previously.
Yeah, Joan.
And I would just like to say that I appreciate the stance of partnership and working together. And I think that that allows us to be a whole lot more productive, moving forward and making change in the future and continuing to partner with our administration and with the school committee and with folks in the community who are dedicated to change. That orientation and that stance is so key to moving forward and making lasting change beyond any one person. So thank you for that.
You bet. We'll follow up on the curriculum piece. I just put, we will put a little bit of thought into that. I do know that our kids are younger and we've noticed a lot of the ADL's training and those peer programs that you've got in the high school. And I know it's tricky with having the five different elementary schools too, but we're hoping that with, there's a social studies curriculum update coming, I think, right? Or, right, do you? So that would probably be an area where these things are talked about. And so that might help just in terms of new content, right? But thank you very much and we will follow up on that curriculum piece with Dr. Wyatt.
Yeah, and I'll just, I don't expect you to stay live in the meeting with us. You can definitely sign up. But you know, either watch later or the recording of the rest of our meeting because there are a number of things on our agenda tonight that do tie into the very important topics that you brought up and that do tie into the anti-racism resolutions that we adopted and signed as the committee on June 17th. So thank you for being here. Were there any other questions or feedback before you let Ms. Wu and Ms. Sibing Dunn head out? No? Alright, well, have a wonderful night and thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so moving along on our agenda to superintendent report. First is the MSBA middle school update. Dr. Thompson and I attended a meeting last week and I'll let him give you the update of the MSBA process so far.
Yes, so, so the next step of the progress is to appoint or hire an owner's project manager, an OPM. That is the firm that will, that will shepherd our feasibility study, shepherd our preliminary architectural drawings. And that process is very prescribed in how it is conducted. We had a subcommittee of the middle school building committee conduct those interviews. They selected Compass Management. Compass Management, for those who might not remember, is the same owner's project manager who did the high school project 10 or 11 years ago. They are a Norwood business. So they came to MSBA along with ourselves, gave a presentation to a board at the MSBA. And we just received last week, the end of last week, our letter of approval for them as our owner's project manager. So, so from that, the feasibility study will start. We have a building committee meeting for next Wednesday at 5:00 PM. And I believe the agenda there is to have a introduction and discussion with Compass Management, where they probably will be talking about where they will start and where we will go from there. So I don't know if, Teresa, if you want to add anything to that?
So in the packets, we did include the presentation that Compass Management had put together for the MSBA meeting. So you have that document. I was talking with Alan Slater earlier today, who is the chair of the middle school building committee. And we do want to bring in Compass Management and then also the architecture, architecture ones. They're hired to a school committee meeting in the fall. So we will get that on the long-term agenda in September or October, depending when those decisions are made. So the school committee can have the opportunity to ask questions directly to them as well. I would just say the biggest thing that stood out to me at last week's meeting with the MSBA is that there continue to be a lot of questions around the possible five through eight configuration. If you remember, we need to study both the six through eight and the five through eight and the feasibility study. And I think almost every single board member on the MSBA had asked more questions around the five through eight. Some of them don't seem to be fully convinced of our space issue at the elementary schools. And there was some questioning of, are you sure if you move the fifth graders into the middle school, you won't then have space that you won't know what to do with at your elementary level? So we all know that space is an issue, but that I think is a key point that we have to make sure we really are studying and answering the questions in the feasibility study. But other than that, I felt the meeting went really well. It felt very supportive and a good collaboration between our OPM and us and the MSBA so far.
I will point out that Compass Management is currently finishing up with the Natick Middle School project. I believe they did both middle schools and both middle schools in Natick are five through eight. So we do have experience with, with doing that, so. The Kennedy is the new one that's going to be online. I think it's September.
But any questions from the committee at this time or anything that you want Dave Patania, Dr. Thompson, and I to bring to the middle school building meeting next Wednesday before we come to school committee again? Okay. So Dr. Thompson, moving on to your report.
Yes, so I have a presentation I'd like to share with you, a reopening update. And then I'll come back to the parabola group that we are working with. I just have to remember how to, how to share my presentation. Hang on a minute. Here we go. Hopefully you will be able to see me and that. Okay, let me know when you can see the slides, just to make sure everybody is on the same page.
I think it's opening, but I don't see it yet.
Okay.
Oh, no, I do.
Okay, everybody, can everybody see? There usually is a little bit of a lag, so I want to make sure everybody's, I don't want to start and jump to slide three before everyone gets to see slide one.
I think you're good.
I think I'm good. Okay. Alright, so, so this is the first of what will be many, many updates over the next few meetings, but we'll call this number one. So you will notice a new slide background. I do want to make a point of pointing out that Ms. Mizuko stole my last set of slides and the, and the pattern. So I'm looking for a new one, so you can give me some feedback on whether the committee likes this one. And I will definitely keep it so he doesn't get to steal it again. Anyway, so looking at the school reopening piece here, we are dealing with a tremendous amount of challenges in this process. First, obviously balancing the health and safety of our students, staff, and families with the educational needs of our students and the family needs of our families. There is a definitive incredibly lack of timely guidance from the state and the Department of Elementary Secondary Education. Part of that is the complexity of the issues and then really trying to give full guidance. But the problem is, is that the clock is still ticking while we are waiting. Fiscal constraints, I don't need to remind the committee, but the state budget is still not finalized. We are still waiting for the federal government and especially the Senate to complete the HEROES Act or the next round of COVID funding and relief. The physical limitations of our buildings, we just talked a little bit about that when we were talking about the middle school project. We have overcrowded elementary schools. We have an older middle school that needs to be replaced and transportation questions and planning around transportation. We still officially do not have transportation guidance. We're supposed to get it later on tonight. As of now, I still do not have it and it's 7:30 or tomorrow morning. So, and that obviously transporting students to school is an important part of the whole picture. So schools are very complex. You know, sometimes we talk about being a three-dimensional puzzle. It really is a five-dimensional puzzle and every action impacts two or three other things in the operations of a school. So I want to offer a couple disclaimers. So first of all, these plans and what we're trying to do does not represent current best educational practice. We have worked hard as a district to bring best educational practice to our schools in the form of new curriculum, new software, technology, personalized learning. There was a huge investment in that, but we know especially at our elementary level that students learn best working in groups, working collaboratively. That is not the educational system that we are talking about. We are talking about students in rows and maximizing distance. Little interaction between students because we don't want students sharing things. This situation, this pandemic, this COVID-19 is going to be a constantly changing situation. The Department of Elementary Secondary Education asks to come up with three models, not to pick a best one, but to have three options ready to deal with what the virus is demanding and what we can physically do in our schools. The first part of this is basically a feasibility study to see what can we fit and how would it fit? So these models will shift. They will vary. You might be in a hybrid model one day. There might be some sort of exposure to someone who might have COVID-19 and we might be a group or a school or a classroom might be in remote for a period of time. And those can change by day. The other thing is we will not likely be able to meet everyone's needs. We are a system that has prided itself on being flexible and willing to work with people. But we, because of these constraints that we're going to be dealing with, there are some needs. We are not necessarily going to be able to meet all of them. And as I've learned going through this, there really are no good solutions. Often, we work very hard to come up with the best solutions and have a good rationale for all of these. But every answer raises three more questions and three more problems. So every decision that we make is, we are encountering other challenges for the other dimensions of this puzzle that we call school. So talk a little bit about the process. I have talked about it before with the committee, but just to make sure the community as well. You know, we began looking at this in April and May, talking about what other systems we're looking at, trying to vision what our schools would need to look like if we were assessing our curriculum instruction through our shutdown. That was an ongoing conversation amongst the leadership team. We then towards June, middle of June, started assembling and deciding what a task force would be for areas of study. Everything from staff needs to scheduling to curriculum to, you know, safety, health and safety to buildings and facilities. We began assembling these teams, examining space, looking at configurations. Curriculum instruction and scheduling team focused on instructional for remote learning and including SEL. and including SEL. We wanted to revision our instruction for what could be a remote or partially remote model, one that was dealing with, you know, detailed instruction and kind of a project-based or problem-based sort of instruction, so the kids were learning skills and applying those skills, hopefully in a more engaging fashion, giving them the tools and the directions to, to, to work on things in a remote session, and, and being able to be a little more self-directed. We ordered three months' worth of personal protection equipment, starting in June, so we have equipment on hand to start the school year, and we are looking at what we need, we are constantly adding to that. Part of that was funds that were left in the 20 budget, part of that were, were part of the CARES Act, part of that was due to our, our health grant that our, our lead nurse, Jill Driscoll manages, so through, looking through all that, we were able to buy three months' worth of PPE, it has arrived, we are ready on that aspect. So, we received the three-model directive from the DESA and Commissioner Riley, with drastically different social distancing of three feet in late June, I believe it was June 24th or 25th that that came out. That did cause a little bit of a readjustment and a trimming of the sales, if you will, for those who are sailors going forward, but that is where we are, we are constantly looking at that, and dribs and drabs are coming out from the department and from the state as we're trying to move through this going forward. So, we were asked to come up with three models, an in-person model, trying to maximize the number of students we can put into our classrooms, again, our elementary schools are older, our middle school has internal rooms, part of the reason why we are looking to replace the middle school is because the ventilation system is rather old, looking at a hybrid situation, and that is where students would come to school for in-person instruction harsh, part of the time, and be working remotely part of the time, and in that situation, we're looking to get to six feet or very close to six feet. And then the third model is the remote learning, which is a situation similar to what we were looking at this spring, but again, we are looking at the curriculum aspect of it and, and changing up, focusing in our key standards that we need to teach, and asking our students to be applying those learnings in a project or activity-based program. So, and again, I can't stress this enough, the thing I keep hearing from parents is, oh, what model are we using? It's, we're, we're talking about what model we're looking to start with, but we will probably be using every model at some point during this year. So, again, we could be fully remote come the flu season, if there is another spike, we could be ordered to close again, we could, things could turn in the other direction, maybe, you know, either herd, herd immunity or a virus vaccine comes out, and we can start looking at more in-person towards, towards next spring, and all the variations between that, so there will be fluid, fluidity in that. We might also be looking at tweaks to our hybrid model, depending on what is going on and where we are moving forward, but I, I think it's important that everybody realizes that the three models are the three models, because we will probably be using the three models. So for in-person, and, and this is a general piece, we're, we're looking at, you know, using the three feet, and three feet is seat to seat. It's, it's not desk to desk, it's seat to seat, and that is closer than the six-foot norm, when we do that, we can get close to about 75% capacity, maybe a little bit higher than what we would expect. Students would be expected to wear a mask, we would need to schedule mask breaks and hand washing and those sorts of things. We're talking about rows of desks with everybody facing forward, the teacher having a teacher space to be at the front of the room, that is a space that is separate somewhat from the students in the back, and we're going to need to train in all of these models, we're going to need to train staff where they're working with students about procedures, protocols, recognizing symptoms, and dealing with all of those things. So those, there's definitely training that needs to be done, as well as training for students, perhaps staggered entry and exit into the building, and we're not even talking about transportation at this point. So the hybrid, we're talking about all the import, all the above, but we are looking at, at closer to a six-foot social distancing piece, classes would be in-person, and then work remotely with supervision, attendance would be taken, and these would be graded assignments. So those are, are changes that would be part of any remote piece, but I'm introducing it here in the hybrid model. So the hybrid schedule, so we are leaning, examining a two-day in-person, three-day remote model at this point, a blue cohort and a gold cohort, if you will. So the blue cohort would do Monday, Tuesday in-person, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday would be remote, the other group, the other cohort would be Monday, Wednesday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday remote, Thursday, Friday in-person, so basically, everybody would be remote on Wednesday, that would give us an opportunity to do some deep cleaning if it was needed, it would give us time for collaboration and calibration to make sure that we have everybody moving in the same place at the same time, and keep in mind that we're talking about revamping a curriculum, and usually revamping a curriculum is a two-to-three-year process, we're looking at doing most of this in about three months. So we are still probably going to need some time to continue and check in with that coming back. So why are we looking at, at, you know, because originally the commissioner had come out with a week on, week off, in, you know, my discussions with other superintendents, that is a similar, that is a similar structure that other districts are using, and by being kind of on the same, or, or a similar schedule would help with some staffing issues. The other piece and concern is, you know, with the one week on, one week off, especially where we get to with our younger students, having a full week without face-to-face interaction could become problematic or probably would become problematic, and that by having, you know, at least two days every week where we are looking at and meeting with students on a one-to-one or personal in-person piece would be better for them, allows for collaboration and calibration between classes, between teachers, consistency of students for teachers, we're looking for teachers to try to schedule, and again, we are still examining this and still trying to figure out how all these pieces fit together, but having a class of, of, of kids be a class of kids with a teacher. So we're hoping to be able to finalize or get more detail on that schedule, what it looked like, at least from a parent or community aspect, there still will be a lot of details to work out behind the scenes in the schools sometime next week. So full remote, basically kind of similar to what it was in June with the curriculum work over the summer that I've already mentioned, we have invested in increased technology that includes more devices in the form of Chromebooks, teacher tools, we've added several teacher tools and software for students to use. Luckily, we have the, have the CARES Act, there also was a technology grant that came out, we have fully accessed those to help with that aspect of it, and again, full remote or any remote will involve graded and attendance being taken. So, there are students who, whose families either have a medical issue and cannot attend, or perhaps they're uncomfortable because of the in-person model, and we are being required to offer what is known as Remote Learning Academy or Remote Only Option, so families would have to notify the district that they are looking at doing a remote-only option, they would follow the same curriculum, the same expectations, the same in-person instruction, the same projects. We will group students into classes, they very well might be from across the district, there might be first graders from all five elementary schools in a class, depending on how many sign up for this, and parents will need to notify and opt-in, and yes, you can opt-out, that would be a little bit of a process, we'd have to place that student back into a classroom and the spacing issues and those sorts of things would have to be adjusted. So, students with special needs, the, the department is requiring certain groups get daily full in-person instruction, and those basically come into, the, the best example is students who are in a substantially separate program, we have several of them throughout the district, if you are in a substantially separate program, chances are you are probably in that category where you would be offered, we are required to offer five days of in-person instruction. So this is for significant needs, we might have other students that maybe are not in a substantially separate program, but they have a high level of specialized services, they might also come into this category, we will be notifying parents soon about exactly which students those will be. So, just to kind of give, we did do a family survey, we are in the process of actually trying to up our survey tool, and we're going to be purchasing Survey Monkey so that we can get some more survey capabilities, but we had 2,096 families respond to the last family survey, survey where we talked about in-person, hybrid, and, you know, those that might choose a remote-only option, and if you remember the scale, it was, you know, four being likely and five being highly likely, so a three-foot in-person sort of scenario, 56% of the respondents told us that they would opt for that, would, would be highly likely or likely, hybrid was 67%, would, would felt comfortable with that, and closer to six feet, and a remote only, or that they felt that either their child needed to be roped for health reasons or family health reasons, was about 26 in that highly likely and likely category, just so you know. So families, what we need to do is to consider these three models, really think about what they are and think about what they would need when we are in them, decide if your child will participate in in-person instruction, be it full in-person or the hybrid. You know, so basically, families are going to have a choice, either doing what the schools are doing where we are in our models, or remote only. We're not going to be offering in-person and hybrid, you know, at the same time, that is just not a option, you know, with our, with our spacing, with our staffing, et cetera. Practice mask wearing, I, I was joking with, with my wife that once upon a time you used to go out, you would pick out your lunchbox, now, now it's going to be picking out a mask to wear to school, we are asking families to provide masks for their kids, to send them with two masks, part of that is finding a mask that is going to be comfortable, that your child is going to wear, and having them wear it. We do need the, the three-foot distance or even being in a closed area is reliant on multiple layers of safety, the distance, the mask wearing, the hand washing, you know, the, the cleaning protocols and those sorts of things. Learning the protocols that are going to be shared out through our health department, we will also be sharing our cleaning protocols, and what they will be, that guidance again is supposed to come either Friday or tomorrow morning to our facilities, folks. And then also consider how you will handle if we have to shut down a classroom or a school, what is, what is the emergency, or how, how will the kids, because they will probably be home and, and remote. This is not easy, I understand that, but that is kind of what we are looking for, and that's what I'm asking families to do going forward. So the work, the work continues, this is a change of working conditions, so we do have to create a memorandum or a negotiated memorandum of understanding of the teachers' union. Tomorrow, I'm engaging in a transportation meeting, I am hoping that I'm going to have those transportation guidelines to go through with our director of transportation and our bus companies, looking at staffing and how we meet all of the staffing needs that these different models represent, the financial impact, and again, I'd mentioned we're still waiting for a state budget, we're still waiting for federal relief for the COVID second COVID Relief Act, whatever we want to call it, the governor grant for $225 per student just came through on Friday, that grant is open, that's about $789,000 for the district, and we can use that towards staffing, equipment, and things along that line. Really digging down deeper into family needs and communicating with families, special education, how we are going to deliver those services, where we're going to deliver those services, and what we need to have set up for that to go, to work on, continued work with our Board of Health and its director, Segal Reese, on our protocols, so we can share those out. Furnishings, especially in pre-K and kindergarten, there's a lot of tables in pre-K and kindergartens, and carpets, and carpets are going away, so how are we going to get those and repurposing furnishings in other parts of the district, and we might need to buy, unfortunately, furnishings for pre-K and K. Additional technology needs, currently assessing those, one thing we're looking at is being able to broadcast a lesson from one classroom to another during those in-person needs, so a full, full group of students could be in school on that day. Lunch, how are we doing lunch, how many lunches do we need? Is it, is it a lunch to go? Extended day, how is that fitting into this piece? And again, the emphasis is not to mix cohorts, our current model really mixes cohorts, we take kids from all different schools and all different grades and move them to one place, that might need to change. The other thing that is, I think I ran out of room, but it is scheduling, especially with transportation, I know we cannot put all the same kids on the bus, we have to have multiple starts, multiple ends, do we need to have, to meet contractual obligations for prep time and, and lunch, lunches without duties and things along that one, so that's all work that needs to be done in the next two and a half weeks. So it's never boring, but if there are questions from the committee, I'll be happy to try to, try to answer them, and Alec is here as well, I'm sure he can help with some of those as well, Dr. Wyatt. All right, so I'm going to stop sharing this, this slide deck, unless someone wants to go back and see a slide. Hearing none, I'll stop.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson, Maya, do you have a question?
Dr. Thompson, you mentioned that I think about a quarter of parents had indicated, or parents of about a quarter of the students had indicated that they were more comfortable with a remote model. Was that pretty evenly across the K to 12 spectrum, or is it, are you seeing different responses at different levels?
That is a question that hopefully, when we ask it the next time, we can, the problem with Google Forms is it gives you a very good 300-foot, it doesn't let you really dig down into that easily, so I, I don't know exactly where that is. We also need to survey staff and see where, you know, who can, because we unfortunately have staff that have perhaps medical conditions or family members with medical conditions that they're in the same boat, and it's basically going to be a matching of the folks that need to be remote only, teaching the students who are opting or need to be. But it's about 26% district-wide, when, when I look at, I did ask, you know, for the breakdown, and it was pretty even per grade, so I'm going to assume that, you know, you know what they say about assume, but this is, this is why we're going to move to a new tool, because we're not, we're not able to dig, dig deep enough with, with Google Forms.
Okay. Are there, are there questions, Joan?
Dr. Thompson, I apologize if I missed this, but was there, you gave an overview of the most high needs of our special education population, we're a district with 44% high needs, does that mean that only 2% of those high needs are going to be coming in-person? What about our English language learners, like other, where are you at with kind of that, there's a spectrum there, folks with accommodations, that type of stuff?
So, so we are, and again, the, the problem is, is that, you know, the data does not necessarily break down, because we need to actually look at IEPs to determine those and what levels our, our English language learners are.
So, Dr. Thompson, I am here if you want me to answer this.
Oh yeah, that, that would be great, because Lori, Lori, Lori had a meeting this afternoon exactly on this issue, so.
Current guidance is students who are high needs according to their PL3, which is a placement code within the IEP, are those that will come five days a week, so it's an indicator within their IEP, determined by a team within the team process, team, IEP team process. Most of those students fall within the category of our specialized programs and/or are at a district, so the vast majority of the students who fall into that category will already be within our specialized programs.
So how are we handling accommodations for folks and English language learning?
So, the second cat- So the second cat, sorry, I realized you couldn't see me as I was talking. Hi.
I thought you were done, sorry.
So the second group that also falls into that category of needing to come to school are students who are duly identified. So if they are special education and ELL students, they also fall into that category of high needs of needing to come. We have not been given guidance beyond that of students falling into high, high needs category that need to be coming five days a week. Right now, those are the categories that have been identified as well as preschool age students.
So then I guess really what I'm asking is, I assume that there are still works. So if we have a student who is, who is an English language learner, but is not special needs, what's the plan for that type of a student?
Yeah. So what the commissioner said today about, about those, that group of students is that it's up to the local districts to make decisions on whether or not those kids should be coming in or not. So I think what we'll have to do as a team is sort of assess that range of EL learners and probably the ones that are neediest or ones that we're going to want to try to get in for face-to-face contact with their teachers over others. Again, that's going to depend on sort of staffing circumstances and, you know, who can do what and space, space circumstances too. But that's something we have to sort of work out, you know, basically on our own.
And how about folks on five oh fours or whose IEPs are not at that upper level?
So, so students who are not at that upper level right now, well, we're within the regular in-person model will be receiving their special education services as IEPs prescribe. How, what that looks like will be different because we will have to be looking at pull out, you know, B and C grid services and pull out and mixing of cohorts of students. So it will definitely look different. We have a call with the commissioner, associate commissioner tomorrow where we're supposed to talk more about what that actually looks like. And so it will, that, that will happen as well as when we move to a hybrid model. The special ed services will be either in-person or through remote distance learning as they were, but we will be shifting to more in-person through either recorded lessons or through teletherapy. Whereas previously in the spring, we were really focusing on being able to give them packets of work and assignments. We will be shifting away from that and it will be more in-person focused service.
And accommodate, and for folks who are on five oh fours and accommodations, sorry, I'm just, I'm trying to get.
Yeah, no, that's a good question. I don't know Lori or Dave, if you've heard it, seen any guidance on five oh fours. I have not seen that anywhere. So I, I would imagine it would be similar situation for kids who are ELS, you know? That would be probably a local decision depending on that five oh four plan and the, the extent to which those kids need to come in and have face-to-face contact with teachers.
They have access to the curriculum, which is what a five oh four making sure that they have whatever necessary access they have. That might be a technology piece. It might be, you know, scaffolding in some ways, but you know, it's, you know, these are all, again, this is, this is kind of the frustration is that you're trying to move down the road and you don't have all the information to answer all the questions. So.
Further questions for Dr. Thompson, Dr. Wyatt and Ms. Amina?
Sorry. Around those five, the five oh fours and the IEPs, you know, if, if, if a child has accommodations that require you know, movement breaks and things like that, and in the current hybrid system, we've got them in rows of desks. And how is that, are we even going to be able to provide accommodations that are in some of these IEPs?
Yes, we will. It's going to look different. It's certainly going to look different, but we will be collaborating with the general education teachers. You know, hopefully we'll have some paraprofessionals. That's, you know, part of what we're looking at right now and been talking about just this morning with principals is looking at what our staffing is with paraprofessionals and do we need to increase that to support classrooms just for this sort of circumstance? You know, not, as Dr. Thompson said in the beginning of his presentation, none of this is ideal and none of this is going to look like what we would want it to look like, but we will do the best we can to have those accommodations in place for those who need it.
And, and, and just to follow that up, I mean, the, the commissioner has been very adamant on the fact that, I mean, we're, we're going to have, I mean, we're going to need to be taking kids outside and doing mask breaks and taking kids to the bathroom and having hand washing breaks. So there's going to be probably more movement to other areas than, than there has been in the past where most of those have been movements, you know, in the classroom. So whether that's enough, we don't know, but you know, that, that child might need to be close to the row that needs to stand up and they, you know, move to this area over here or, or next to the door so that they can make that movement when they need to move it. Or we have to buy more gel seats or whatever else it might be, but you know, we're going to do, we're going to do the best we can. You know, but again, it, it is problematic in that we're constantly, it's like, well, how do we this? And how do we that? And how do we this? Because it is drastically different and challenging. So.
Yeah, my concern, as I think I've shared my views on how the commissioner of the state of, the education commissioner is handling this, which is that I'm less than impressed. My concern is that when you move to remote learning, a lot of those five oh four accommodations are, as Anne Marie said, around issues around executive functioning, right? Or issues around attention and those types of things. And online learning requires a much higher degree of the ability to self-regulate yourself academically in order to be successful. And so in addition to the, the large chunk of students that we have on five oh fours who already deal with that in a classroom, I think even for our students who don't deal with that in a classroom are going to start experiencing that if they didn't already start experiencing that. So in your copious amounts of spare time, it would be lovely to see some sort of, you know, especially the longer that this goes on, some sort of self-paced or some, some sort of instruction on how to self-regulate, you know, maybe starting with high school students. Just giving them those skills that they need to be able to do this a little bit better instead of letting them figure it out on their own. It's one of the biggest reasons that students end up failing in college is they don't know how to self-regulate and remote learning forces that. So it would be great if we could kind of help them out a little bit.
Yeah. Well, Joan, just so you know, one of the things that the curriculum committees are talking about is that first week or maybe even two weeks of school. And, and how do, you know, what's the content of that, that first week or two? And it's obviously going to focus on social emotional issues. It's going to focus on how-to kind of issues. And so I think that's where we can build in some, some instruction, advice on self-regulating and managing your learning while at home, you know? Because they're going to have to know, how do I log on some kids and, you know, all from the A to Z, you know? That's going to have to be the curriculum for the first week or two. And teachers are thinking about that.
I did see some evidence of that in the spring as we kind of got on, there were checkpoints, right, for the students? And that was just, that's immensely helpful for helping students build those metacognitive skills that they need. So just want to plug that in again to just say thank you for doing that and it's extraordinarily important for them.
Right, right. Yeah, we, we, we never expected to be doing what we were doing with especially elementary students last year. And I think we've, we've learned a tremendous amount from that experience and I think we're, we're planning to do better come the springs, this fall rather. But, but yeah, it is, it is a challenge.
I have, I'm, sorry, I have one more really hard question.
Okay, I'm ready.
Are you going to post that PowerPoint somewhere? Can we, can we get that thing posted immediately so that we can be sharing that out to people? There's a lot of people I think who would really like to see in black and white that there's, you know, be prepared for these three models, you know, think about it. I just really would like to get that. If we could like have a banner going on the town, you know, where it says, "Congratulations graduates." If we could just run that thing across there, that would be great. Can we get that publicized as much as possible?
Yep, we will, we will get it up on the website and I will try to put it up on the, on the Facebook page as well if people want to go, go take a look at it. This is, this is just, it is an update. It will, it will change between now and next week. And for all those parents who this is not what they wanted to hear, I, I, I'm sorry. It's not what I want to be doing. You know, I would much rather be planning for a non-pandemic opening working on all the great things we've continued working on and, and our strategic plan and all sorts of other fun stuff we've been doing. But that's, that's not the situation we are. And, you know, like I said, the first thing is we, we need to be concerned and I'm not a, I'm not a public health expert. I'm an educator. But we need to be concerned about the health and safety of our students, of our staff, our families. We need to make sure this does not blow out of control again like it did in March. We need to make sure everybody is safe. But we also need to make sure, and that part of that week model, half in, half out, is we don't have kids trying to go multiple days and keep organized. So, you know, I, I thank you for listening. I thank you for your support and we're going to keep moving.
Yeah, if I may, one more point, I think that's important. You guys may know this already, but it's really important, I think, for the community to know this. And Dave, maybe you want to plug it into your presentation, but for a full, full in-person program to work, we, we can't do that at six feet. People need to understand that, that the only way we can possibly make that work is with the three-foot rule. And maybe, you know, four through, four foot might work, but five and six feet is out of the question. And the public needs to know that because we don't have the room, we don't have the space for that and we don't have the, you know, faculty, the staffing for that. So that's just needs to be clear to people so they don't think we can do fully in-person with a six-foot social distancing. It's impossible.
Right. And, you know, and we're also, you know, I, I don't want to get too far into facilities without having to look at that guidance and talk with, with Mr. Riccardi in detail. But, but, but we are looking at maximizing rooms that have windows, especially at the middle school. And, and looking at that so that, and windows, windows open during the day. Bus windows open, so winter coats will probably be important as well. You know, because it will not necessarily be overly warm and we're probably looking at increased heating costs going forward as well. But that's going to be important again. Open safety first.
At the middle school, right? Of course, where we have electric heat.
Yeah.
Dr. Thompson, I just want to share a couple of comments to reinforce some of the things that you and Dr. Wyatt touched on, really for the community to understand. The first is I, I, I can't emphasize enough the strong partnership that we really have had with Segal Reese since March. Dr. Thompson and I have another meeting with her on Friday. There's a nineteen-page document that Desi put out around protocols that I emailed all of you yesterday when we got it. And if you read through that, there's some scenarios that they're very clear on, but then there's a lot of scenarios that they say local districts should work with your local board of health. And what Segal and Dr. Thompson and I did back in March when this first hit Norwood was we started to put together a couple of protocols. So we do have a base document and Segal was working on it today to revise that based on current research and best practice and, and, you know, all those things coming out from OSHA and CDC and Desi. So we're going to look over that on Friday. Segal is going to come to our meeting next week, as is, I believe, Dr. Thompson, Paul Riccardi and Jill Driscoll. So they will be available to answer questions around the health and safety of students and staff and, and just the health and safety of the facility as well. So they will be at our next meeting. And Dr. Thompson, I know you put it on the slide, but I, I think people really, really have to understand how fluid this is. And I will try not to be too negative in my public health perspective here. Sorry, Joan, I see you. I see you, Joan. But if a case happens in a class, we have to go through quarantine and contact tracing and, and all of that. And in the dusty guidelines that they put out, if there is more than one cohort, so let's say in first grade classroom and a fifth grade classroom at one of the elementary schools, if there is more than one cohort that has been exposed. So maybe it's a pair of siblings, one in first and one in fifth grade, they've now exposed both of those cohorts. We're talking about shutting down schools. And you have some of what we have to work on with Segal in more detail is how long are they shut down? Because what Desi says is one to three days to clean buildings, possibly fourteen days to quarantine. And then there's a whole other section in the guidance around closing entire districts. Like this is really complicated stuff and you know, we've started to think through some scenarios, but there's probably more scenarios that we won't think through, but then we'll suddenly be in. So I, you know, I'm a parent too, obviously, and I'm just as frustrated and stressed and worried as all of their parents of what are my kids going to do in the fall and how are they going back to school? But I just think unfortunately, you know, the virus doesn't really care what our plans are. And the decisions will be made based on science and contact tracing and cases in Norwood. So I would just ask people to keep that in mind as we move forward.
Right. And, and if I could just make one more, one more comment that maybe the, the public out there is thinking of. We are trying to, with our hybrid model, try to make it consistent throughout the entire district. The thinking behind that is that a lot of families, you know, look for older siblings to watch younger siblings and things along that line. There are other districts that are looking at different models at different levels. We are trying to avoid doing that and kind of being on a similar schedule so that families can be on a similar schedule, whether their kid's at an elementary school or, or at the high school or at the middle school. But that again, is still a work in progress. But I just wanted to clarify that for, for everybody else.
So Dr. Thompson, next Wednesday, since we've now added another school committee meeting, thank you everybody for being willing to do that. You will be coming to us with the three, the outlines of the three plans that gets submitted to Desi and we will be voting on that next Wednesday.
Well, there'll be an update. The, the, the report to the, the, the report for the end of July is more of a numbers report, not a detailed how-to report, but you are right, the school committee does need to vote on the final plan. I don't know if I will, I mean, I will have an update for the committee, especially around transportation and facilities. But I'm not quite sure, as again, I mean, I'm still, you know, they say tonight or tomorrow, it probably will be tomorrow night. Right. So that leaves me Friday and then all of a sudden it's Monday and, you know, so, and those are important key components to having a plan. So this is my ongoing frustration. I think I'm grayer and have less hair than I was five months ago, but we'll we'll just leave it at that.
Yeah, Joan.
So then what's the timeline then? If we need to vote on it before it goes in, our next meeting is the twenty-ninth and then the fourth?
The fifth.
The fifth, and it goes in on the fourth? So, or do I have those dates?
Well, Desi's calling it like contingency plans, right? The, the template that you have to fill out for July thirty-first. But then the final plan, because then Desi's supposed to give you feedback after July thirty-first. And then the final plan is due on August tenth.
Right.
When should I reserve some time to read the plan that I'm going to have to vote on? That's really what I'm asking.
For the August fifth meeting?
Okay. So in the August fifth meeting, we'll have
Right.
what you think will be the plan that you're going to send in.
Right. It might be more of an outline than it is a detailed narrative, but yes.
But aren't we supposed to, see, this is where I'm confused. Because I read different things from Desi and then M A S E and then I see what other school committees are doing. So I'm trying to be. There's a webinar, by the way, tomorrow night at six o'clock from, from M A S E on what school committees are supposed to be doing. Through all this, I have a work conflict that I'm trying to change so I can be on that webinar. But if anybody else is able to be on that, you know, email me later and I think it'd be really good if at least one of us is on that webinar. But what, but it seems to me that like the template that you're submitting on the thirty-first, Dr. Thompson, we are supposed to vote and approve what is in that template. And I, and I don't foresee any large thing that we would say no. But it seems to be that's what other school committees are doing. That way, when you get to the vote on the final plan, final plan on August tenth, that there's like no big surprises. The school committee and the administrators are working together. Is that accurate?
I don't know the answer to that. The commissioner today said that the school committee should, should vote on the plan, the end of the first week or the first week of August or the beginning of the second week of August. That's what he said today. So. I mean, I have no problem. I mean, I have no problem with you guys weighing in on what we're going to submit on the, on, on the thirtieth. I'm not sure it's going to be super fantastic reading based on, I don't know if anyone's looked at the form, but I'll send it back around to everybody. It's basically in four hundred words or less, you know, what are you looking at here and what's your, what's, what are your constraints for an in person model? Which one do you think you're going to start with? So, yeah.
Right. Yeah, I think the probably the most useful thing for you to know about that July thirty first plan is that we're probably going to be checking all boxes, the boxes at each level that our preference is to go with a hybrid model. You know, so that, you know, that, that's probably the most salient part of that thirty first submission for you to be behind, you know, or supportive of. The rest is just sort of details around, you know, what that's going to look like and blah, blah, blah. That'll have to get hashed out certainly by the tenth.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Any further questions tonight on this topic? All right. Well, thank you. Did you have any other superintendent report items?
That honestly is all I've been working on. So unfortunately, no.
Well, thank you. So moving along to budget, we have one budget item on our agenda tonight, which is the fee schedule that was originally supposed to be discussed on June seventeenth. But we ran out of time, so it got moved to tonight. So Ms. Sheridan, do you want to guide us through the fee schedule document?
Yep. So in your packet, you have the fee schedules and basically what the understanding was with this meeting was to give you the list of the fee schedules and to maybe decide on a timeline when they should each be revisited and maybe see if we want to raise any of these fees. I do have some suggestions on which ones that I think should be revisited first, but I can go through the sheet with you. On the, the mail prices, we do have the rates for the mail prices. They, they're usually reviewed each year, but according to Eli, the director of food service, this year the USDA has given us a waiver. So that would be one area that I would suggest waiting till next year on. I'm not sure if you want me to read all the fees out loud or if, that's up to you, Teresa. Do you want me to read the fees out, out loud?
Yeah, I think for people who are following along, helpful, Karen. Thank you.
Okay, so the elementary lunch is two seventy five. The breakfast, one fifty. Secondary lunch, three twenty five. Breakfast, two dollars. Reduced for all schools is forty cents for lunch, forty cents for breakfast. Adult and faculty is four dollars for lunch, four dollars for breakfast, and the milk is fifty cents. So again, that one, I think we should wait until next year to review that since we do have a waiver. The bus fees, the suggestion on the timeline due to the COVID nineteen, I would suggest we wait till at least next year on that. The bus fees, it's free for all students in grade one to six who are over two miles from the school, as well as all the kindergarten students. It's three hundred dollars per year. It's seven hundred and fifty family cap per year. Hundred and thirty seven point five for the reduced rate if it's before July second, but that was, the date was changed due to the COVID nineteen situation this year. It's a hundred and fifty, the reduced rate after July second and twenty five dollars for the free rate after July second. The eligibility for busing per the Department of Ed, I did give you that. On eligibility is all children in grades kindergarten through sixth grade who reside more than two miles from the school there entitled to attend and the nearest school bus stop is more than one mile from their residence. So that would be the students that you would be obligated to bus. The preschool, the little mustangs, the ten month program, my suggestion is that maybe we review this in the spring. The, it's a ten month program. You have two days a week is, is two twenty five a month. Three days a week is two eighty five a month. Four days a week is three forty a month. And four and a half days per week is six hundred dollars a month. I did not see, and when I was looking into the fees, the dates that I could find that the rate was increased. For example, the lunch was last increased in fiscal year nineteen, but there was not a lot of, of notes on when they were increased, although when I did have discussions with different program directors, a lot of them indicated that they had not had an increase in a while. So that was, that was suggest for the little mustangs, maybe review it in the spring and consider whether you're going to increase it for the fiscal year twenty two. The extended day program, we did increase the rates for that on the last school committee meeting. So that program appears to be all set for the moment. The rates were increased to a hundred and twenty for two days, a hundred and eighty for three days, two forty for four days, three hundred for five days, a hundred and five dollars an hour. The Chromebook insurance, this is, you, if you have the Chromebook, it's optional. You do not have to get the insurance. But if your Chromebook needs to be repaired or replaced, then you would be responsible for the cost. That is thirty dollars a year. According to Joe, they've only had this Chromebook program for two years, so there has not been a rate increase on that since that induction of the program. Athletics, I was told that it's been approximately ten years since the last rate increase. And that is, the athletics is two hundred per student for each season, eight hundred dollars family cap per school year. My suggestion for this one again is maybe we would review it in the spring again and decide whether or not you want to increase that for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty two. Fine arts, again, I was told it's probably been about ten years since you increased the rates. It's a hundred and fifty per year and includes all the extracurriculars for the fine arts. Again, I thought maybe we might want to review this in the spring of two thousand and twenty one, again, if we want to increase the rates for fiscal twenty two. The student parking fees, this is the parking spaces at the high school, the seniors are offered the spaces first, any of the spaces that are left are offered to the juniors. It's been approximately ten years since the rate change. It's a hundred dollars per space from September through if you sign up for the space from September through January, and then if you sign up after January, it's fifty dollars per space. The rental of facilities, again, my indication was that it was been a while since that been changed, possibly ten years. This is, in my opinion, is one that I would say number one priority to review, the rental of facilities. According to Paul Riccardi, it's eleven dollars to thirteen dollars per square foot for any of the leases that he has in the school. I asked him why the eleven to thirteen, how they designate eleven to thirteen. And his answer was, it's three year leases, so there's a percentage increase on the years, so it would be depend on when the lease started. So that was his answer on why it was eleven to thirteen. You also have a fee structure for the rental of facilities. And the fee schedule is by the different locations and it's three different classes. So the, the classes would have rental fees and they would also have custodial charges. You've got a class one, which is no charge and that is for the school and town. It's for, it's the rentals that are subject to appropriation, appropriation by the town meeting are exist as a requirement of state statute. And it also includes the PTA and the PTO and some of the nonprofit parent groups that want to use it to maybe raise some money for some of their student activities would also include them. But when I read the class one, it also indicated that an extension of this includes organizations independent from the government, government structure, but the integral to the function or operation of the town as determined by the school committee. So you do have discretion on that for, to designate somebody as class one, all right? Class two, class two, it has, it's a nonprofit. They have to be a hundred percent from the town of Norwood. And if, even if it's a majority, it would not be in class two, a majority of a nonprofit would go to class three. It has to be residents. An example would be Little Oak would be something in class two. And then the last class would be class three, which is the private groups and individuals. So if you look in your packet, it would give you the rental fee schedule and custodial charges for each location and also by class. For, I'll give you one example for the Savage Center and the middle school, class two. If the rental of a classroom is ten dollars an hour, there's no custodial charges. If you go to class three, that same classroom is thirty five dollars an hour and thirty six dollars for custodial per hour. So it, there are different rates for different classes and different locations. One of the other things I didn't want to mention, my view had asked me about extended day rent on the last school committee meeting. Extended day is something that I think maybe we should have a little bit of a discussion on because when you decide where extended day is going to go on with the class, it kind of is a little bit up in the air because you could consider it a nonprofit, but then is it something that maybe the school committee might decide that it's an extension of the organization independent from this government structure, but you feel is integral function of the operation of the town? So I think that merits a discussion on how, how you want to go forward with your extended day. I did have, I went down to the facilities and asked Maureen, if we, for example, on extended day, if we were charging them according to the class two, which is the nonprofit, they would be char, they'd be charged more than what we're charging them now. Right now, extended day is being charged, let's see, it's six, it goes, it's six thousand, wrote it down, six thousand eight eighty eight a month. And in the summer, I believe, we're only charging them one point five months because they're not doing the full month for July or the full month for August. So an example would be, it, for the, the one point five months, extended day is being charged ten thousand three thirty two. So if we took that and the number of hours and what they space that they're using, Maureen figured out if we were going by class two, they'd be charged sixteen thousand seven hundred and sixty. So if we put them in the class two and didn't do the, they have a, a reduced rent at, I believe it's eighty cents a square foot, then they'd still, they'd be paying more than what they're paying now. So that I feel is a matter of discussion. So when we do go through the rental of facilities, that might be an area that we want to discuss. And one other thing I did want to mention is that I have a meeting tomorrow with Terry, my accounting assistant with Unipay and we're working, we've been working on getting more of the fees online. So we're scheduled, cross your fingers, to go forward with preschool, extended day and Chromebook insurance in August. So and then the next one, we would move on to get into this Unipay online system would be athletics. And the hope is to have all of the fees added into that Unipay for the online. So people will have easier time paying and have the use of the online. So what else was it? So that's where I am. If anybody has any questions on the fees or if you feel the timeline should be changed, you can let me know. Again, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer it or find the answer when I go back to school tomorrow.
Thank you, Karen. I just have one quick question. Well, I think it's quick, around the Chromebooks insurance. So with the rush to go remote in March, we did distribute a lot of Chromebooks to elementary students and we did not do anything about insurance. And I know when I last talked to Joe Kidd in June, that was on his radar to start to consider for the fall. What are we doing in the fall with kids who have technology? Are we going to be doing insurance for everybody? Have we looked at this yet?
I have not heard anything on that, but the Chromebook insurance is optional. But I mean, it's certainly something we should discuss. I mean, I'll, I'll go down to Joe tomorrow and actually Dave, you too, and decide how we want to go about that. I know when we went to the, you know, at home, I think the Chromebooks were just quickly dished out to the students. Dave, you have a comment on that one?
Yeah, so we've, we've talked about it in theory and the fact that we probably should expand that for next year, but we were waiting to see what model we were going to be in and what, when we could have that conversation. So it definitely is looking like that's a conversation we're going to need to have as far as a priority. Is not the, the priority is to be set up to have school and then we'll have to come back to that. But yes, we, we have discussed that and that you know, even had a debate back and forth about cases because we're looking at kids taking these things home now in elementary school, which was not the original plan. So.
Right.
But there's enough, there's enough on the plate that's ahead of that. So even, you know, especially at the technology, where we're trying to make sure we have all the tools we need and all the training we need. And now looking at, you know, different tools for teachers to, to work in, in a environment we're creating as we're sitting here. So.
Sure, sure. Mind, did you have a question?
I just wanted to remind everybody that the reason this is on our agenda right now is that when the school committee FinCom and the Board of Selectmen agreed to some updated financial policies last year, one of the things we talked about that was the need to review fees on a more regular basis. And as you mentioned, some of these fees haven't been updated in ten years and that might be okay. But it was just kind of an acknowledgement that it should be something we at least look at once a year so that we don't get to a situation where, you know, something hasn't been updated in ten years and we're, we're way behind where we should be. So I think this is great that we're getting it out there. There is this report that people can, you know, we have seen this, we know what the numbers are. But I don't, I don't think that we need to, to change anything at the, right now. The, although the only one that I remember changing in the last four years is I know we have updated the preschool tuition. That one has been updated in my time on the committee. And we have discussed bus fees. I know we have discussed the athletic fees. I think that there, one of the things that came out of the Athletic Study Committee was concerns about the athletic fees being a hurdle for some students in terms of discouraging participation. So I think although, you know, we haven't kept place with inflation on that, I, I think ideally we'd love to have no fees at all. So I am not recommend, I wouldn't recommend that we make any changes at this time.
Yeah, and I think if I remember correctly, the preschool discussion, I don't know if we've changed these as much as they added an option.
I think before you were in the committee, I think we increased fees. So I think it was like four years ago.
Okay.
Yes, we did also add a different option that was, yeah.
Okay, okay. So is everybody comfortable with the timeline as presented by Karen tonight and I can work off of that with the long term agenda or are there suggestions? Dave, did you have a comment?
I was just going to comment that, you know, if we're not back to school full time, you know, what's the point of parking space fees? But we're not going to review that till two thousand and twenty one, so I'll table my, my questions.
Yeah, Joan.
I'm not sure why we wouldn't look at rental fees. So in a, I don't know, in a, like a more systemic fashion, like looking at going up by two percent a year or something like that. So I agree with excluding anything that touches students connected to schools with, given all the uncertainty. But things like rentals and those types of things, I, I'd be in favor of having a discussion around what makes sense to do on an automatic basis so that we don't continue to fall behind, but instead think about doing something like two percent, three percent, whatever makes sense on an ongoing basis. And then reviewing, have we gotten too high in the future? Um, and then reviewing, have we gotten too high in the future?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, do do you um realize in that statement, Joan, that there are policies that go along?
Oh, my, I retract everything I just said as a member of the policy subcommittee. Thank you. Yeah, no, I do, but I do think it's worth the the conversation.
So are you speaking like more? Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
It's so the suggestion is to keep everything with the exception of reviewing rental of facilities.
Yeah, and you want, do you want, I was kind of saying, keep everything but pull the rental um analysis earlier? Like, are you thinking in the fall, Joan? Is that your?
Yeah, I I would, yeah, I would just say, again, in all of our copious free time, I think we should prioritize the rentals. Um, so fall seems like it makes the most sense.
Okay. Sounds good.
Maya?
Um, I, Joan, I think that's an excellent point. I agree with you about the rentals. I do think that that's something we, I know it was kind of like brought up um three years ago maybe, but we didn't actually make any changes then. So it's been a long time since those have changed. And, you know, some of those things, um, there's some of those fees kind of considered the fact that we have costs associated with that. And of course, minimum wage has increased since then. So I think those are reasonable conversations to have. But I also think that we can wait a little while to do that because we have so much on our plate and because like, so I'm not arguing against a fall thing, but I also think that if it slips to a li- even a little bit later, it's probably not that big a deal. Because I don't really think we're like, you know, this is a big deal when we are renting out the the auditorium for a dance recital or something like that. But that's obviously not happening right now. So um I think we can, you know.
Ye of little faith. I am so optimistic we are going to be renting out for dances by January second.
The the one thing with regard to the rental, um it the custodial charges, it would be one area that we might want to look at when we look at the fees. Just to make sure that that because i- if you have a custodian, you're probably paying them time and a half to make sure that that's covering the custodian. That would be my only um suggestion on that. But I mean, I agree with Maya. If we want to wait, we can wait, Joan.
Well, I just added it to the long.
We're all like, yeah.
I just added it to our long-term agenda for fall. So it says fall, but obviously that long-term agenda is fluid. So.
When when we don't have anything on the agenda, I'd like to start with rental agreements first.
So like twenty twenty-three at this point? All right. Any other comments on the the fee structure or if you schedule at this time? All right, thank you. And Ms. Sheridan, you didn't have anything else budget related tonight, correct?
Um, not tonight.
All right, thank you. Uh, so we do have a couple of old business items um carried over from our last meeting to quickly go through. Um, so long-term agenda document and the school committee meeting dates for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Um, I haven't received any feedback from anybody. So unless you tell me differently soon, I'm gonna assume that those dates that Dr. Thompson and I put together work for everybody. Um, but any discussion around that now?
Um, for the end of year report?
Yeah.
Teresa, um, maybe that first one in August?
August fifth for the end of year report?
No, either the first or the second. Um, I I prefer not the last one in July because I have there's some people on vacation, there's some town on vacation, so.
Yeah, I had it plugged in for both the July twenty-ninth and August fifth to ask you which is better. So August fifth is fine. We'll keep it there.
Yeah, the fifth would be good.
Okay. So I will ask Donna to post those dates then that are on the long-term agenda for September through June. Um, and um, you know, I I tried to put all the different topics that we have to get on the agenda. And now that we have the dates solidified, Dr. Thompson and I can work on that. Um, but I am also embracing the reality that um Plan A is probably not going to happen. And this agenda document is going to be very, very fluid over the next couple of months. Yeah, Maya?
Um, I'm kind of reluctant to bring this up, but um it's something we've been talking about for a while is the idea of scheduling a school committee retreat or, you know, a meeting that's not a regular business meeting to kind of talk about school committee goals. And um I don't know where we're at with the school committee self-evaluation. And um just thought, as long as we're talking about the long-term agenda, I'm curious what people's thoughts are on that topic.
Yeah, that was a question I put on the long-term agenda too. So I'm glad that you're you're bringing that up. Um, I have not followed up with Dorothy Presser on the results of the self-evaluation, um, only because my conversations with her have been around everything else that's been going on. But I can definitely follow up and get us that um that feedback, uh, because they compiled the survey that we took. So we should be able to get that pretty easily. Um, but what is everybody's intent and and wish? Because we did talk back at our last M A C workshop in January. Obviously, a lot has changed since then, but we did talk about wanting to have like a day-long workshop. Um, because there are a lot of things that school committees are supposed to be doing in a workshop fashion around setting goals and um priorities and self-evaluation. So what what is the wish of the rest of the committee? If time?
I'm fine doing it. I think it's a great idea. Just I want to make sure we can do it safely. You know, that's the first concern, of course. And, you know, it's probably impossible to do virtually. It's hard enough to see everybody on a small screen and and have a conversation. It's it's quite um challenging. So, you know, how do we do this and meet somewhere safely? You know, that's the question.
Yeah, I don't even know how M A C, I mean, they're offering a lot of online stuff right now. Like I said, there's a webinar tomorrow. And I've attended a ton of their webinars in the last two months, so I'm not even sure how they're operating if they're back in person. Um, but I can find out what the both in-person and remote options would be. Um, I do think it's important for us to do. Um, but I know that I personally feel a little panicked about adding anything else through the summer because I know I'm totally booked through the summer.
And just to follow up, what day is it usually like a Saturday or a Sunday or a Friday? Like, just?
We would figure it out, just like, you know, set up a duty poll and and figure it out.
Sure.
Um, but Emery, Joan, thoughts?
I I mean, I want to rent out the auditorium for dance party, so. So, I mean, yeah, if we need to do it, we need to do it. I think if we are going to think about doing it virtually, I'd actually recommend a series of workshop meetings um where we go for like two hours at a time um on a or on a set issue or a set number of issues and then kind of spread that out over, you know, maybe once a month. Um, and if we're going to do something in person, then I'm fine with doing a little bit longer. Um, but I'd like, you know, if we want to get this done at all anytime soon, it's probably going to have to be virtual. In which case, I'd recommend that we have a real targeted agenda for, say, ninety minutes to two hours and have that planned for a series of three months or so with three meetings or four meetings within that.
So I can follow up with um Dorothy. I'm not going to promise you that I'm going to do it before the twenty-ninth because there's so many things already that I have to do for us before the twenty-ninth. Um, but I can try to touch base with her before our August fifth meeting. Maya?
Um, I don't think, I I guess a couple of things. One is I want to make sure that um we are respectful of the administration's number one priority is to figure out how to get everybody back to school or, you know, what our reopening plan looks like. So I don't really want to make sure that whatever we do doesn't distract from that. And and so I would be concerned about scheduling something for August. Um, but I and but I also think that, you know, there we don't. I have found the the sessions with M A S C to be very helpful, but I don't think that we need M A S C necessarily to do this. I think that, you know, have setting a session aside where we are saying like, well, we're not going to be, you know, voting on minutes and we're not going to be looking at budgets. We're going to be talking about, you know, in what ways are we working well together as a committee? You know, do we want to revisit our operating protocols? What do we want our goals to be? We might be able to have those. It'd be great, actually, if Dorothy's available to help facilitate that, but I don't know that that needs to be, you know, that we need to say like, oh, we're not going to do it unless Dorothy's available. So I guess I'm just like ge- giving you both answers, right? At once, I'm like, well, don't do it now, but don't wait for Dorothy's.
I but I could definitely touch base and just see where they are as an organization and what they're offering, and then we can talk about this. Um, I can put a, you know, I just I even feel nervous about the next two meetings because I don't know what else Dr. Thompson is going to be telling me is coming our way. Uh, but I can definitely, you know, more research into it and then soon bring this back to us and we can decide what we want to do as a committee. Because it's important. You're absolutely right. Any other feedback at this time about the long-term agenda? We can talk about agenda offline, so email me, call me anytime if you want to talk about agenda items. Um, but next on tonight's agenda is wrapping up our discussion around the superintendent evaluation and composite document. Um, so Dr. Thompson did send out his um self-reflection document. We've had that for um about two weeks. He sent it out on July tenth. Um, as a reminder, our individual evaluations are due by the end of the day on Friday. Is everybody in the committee still on target with that?
Yep.
Okay. Um, so the two things that we did not finalize in regards to how the composite document is going to be organized um was how we want to handle outliers and then also how we want to determine proficiency ratings if we are in a situation um where not everybody agrees. Um, so we did decide on the June seventeenth meeting that we were going to include uh comments in the composite document if at least two members um wrote a similar comment. So we did decide that already. Um, but what do we want it to do if there is an outlier, if there's a very different comment on a certain criteria um than the rest of the committee? Um, any thoughts on that? Maya?
My recommendation is that um it not be included in the first draft of the um of the uh composite evaluation, but that, you know, we do ask that um the committee review that composite evaluation. And if somebody feels that strongly about adding a comment, that's certainly something that we can discuss as a committee. It's it's, you know, so it's something that um we should be comfortable editing that document, but I just think that um because that first draft is a public document, I I think it's um important for us to um to start with sort of some the things that are said by at least two members of the committee.
Um, one question in this scenario I was thinking through earlier, um because I agree with what you just said overall with outlier, but what if it's a situation where one of us has worked with Dr. Thompson on a certain project or task force in a way that others haven't? And then that person brings that that experience up as evidence or in the statement? Um, would that be covered under the same type of, oh, only one person mentioned it and don't add it? Or because maybe the member was the only one who worked with Dr. Thompson in that capacity, we would add it?
Well, I just think that that point, then, you know, that's a compelling argument to bring to the committee and say, I feel that this is a really important perspective to add. Or maybe, you know, when we get the composite document, we can see each other's individual comments. And so maybe somebody at that point will say like, oh, I felt that this other member's um opinion was really important and I'd like to second that and ask for it to be added to the composite. But I just think that asking whoever has compiling the composite to make that judgment call is tough. Because I don't think it's going to be black and white to say like, oh, this person knows and that person doesn't. I just. So I think it's just best if we start with a rough draft document that includes what two or more people have said. And then um, you know, we can always add.
Okay.
Um, but, you know, the truth is that we we can always strike from the document too. But the rough draft is a public document and so um you can strike and take the language out, but it's already in public. And so it's um, you know, y- you can't make it, you can't completely undo the fact that it's been made public.
Right, it's it's a tricky process. Yeah. Um, do you want to make an official motion on that?
Sure. I'd make a motion that, you know, we include things that are said by two or more people in the composite.
Right, but it's, but not the outliers at this time.
Right.
Okay, is there a second on that?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Do you have any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
All right, fair zero. Um, and then what do we want to do about the proficiency ratings? Um, if not everybody agrees. Um, and just as a reminder to the committee that we could be in a situation, depending on what um Emery decides, and no pressure, Emery, to fill out the individuals and participate in this process, um, we could be in a situation where there's only four of us um voting on a composite. So I think we want to think now and talk through what if it's a two to two, what's going to happen? Maya?
I would recommend, you know, like tie goes to the runner, like the same thing. Like if there's a tie, then we just go up in the in the um in the rough draft and then the committee can discuss and and vote if they want to change that recommendation.
Okay. Other discussion? Um, or is that Joan?
Can you clarify that, Maya? I'm sorry. Um, you said.
Say there's like two people who vote needs improvement and two people who vote proficient. Then you say, well, let's let's just like bump it up to proficient for the rough draft of the document. But everybody will be able to see that it was a two-two tie. And and then the the full committee votes on that final document and could make, somebody could make a motion to change it to needs improvement.
Okay. I would just prefer that we just bring it to the committee as a two-two tie. If it's a two, if it's a two-two tie, let us discuss it and then the and then upon vote, tie goes to the winner. So if we're still deadlocked after discussion with the committee, then tie goes to the runner and we bump it to the highest proficiency. Or the higher proficiency, not the highest proficiency. You don't get to go from needs improvement to proficient and to super duper because we can't agree. Dave's like, break me low, all of you.
So Joan, you're saying in the composite document acknowledged that there was a tie. Two members rated this, two members rated that, write that up in the composite. And then when we get to this discussion, if we vote and there's still a tie, then Maya's recommendation that it it goes up at that point?
Correct. I'm just recommending that we highlight that as a starting point for discussion versus making a making a, you know, I'm trying to prioritize the discussion so that we come to it fresh on areas that we really need debate, which in the case of a two-two tie would be an area that we really need debate.
Okay.
And then tie goes to the runner after we've discussed.
After discussed, okay.
Yeah.
Do you want to make that motion?
Uh, right. So um the Maya and I, in a in the event of a two-two, in the event of a tie in the written document, Maya and I will present both sides for review and then the committee will discuss. And upon voting, if we are still deadlocked, we will assign the higher of the two ratings.
Okay, is there a second on that motion?
I'll put a second.
Thank you, Dave. Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Thank you very much. Um, any other comments, questions on the um evaluation that we have due by Friday? Maya?
I just want to make sure everybody has all six forms. I think I emailed them out to everybody, but if you have not seen them, please let me know.
I know I have them. Everybody else good with that?
Yes, thanks again for doing all that work.
Yes, thank you, Maya. And thank you, Maya and Joan, for working on the composite over the next couple of weeks. I I know it's a huge undertaking, so I appreciate it. Dr. Thompson, was there anything you wanted to share before we write those individual evaluations? No?
No.
You shared it all in your self-assessment, right?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Uh, so moving along now to policy, uh, there are a number of policies on our agenda and in our packet. Um, so the first one at the last meeting on June seventeenth, we did our first vote on a brand-new policy around remote learning. Um, that's policy I H B H E. Um, we voted in favor of it at the last meeting. It's been on our website since then. Um, Dr. Thompson, I don't believe we received any public comment, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, so tonight we want to take a second vote and if it's voted on again, it becomes an official policy of the district. Is there a motion to approve um the remote learning policy? Maya? Maya? Thank you. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you, Joan. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
5-0, perfect. So next on the agenda are three brand-new policies. These are model policies drafted by the MASC. You should have in your packet a document that includes all three of them in the same document. And I identified in just a couple of places in italics where either Dr. Wyeth or some of the other administrators had recommended some minor edits to the language. But other than what you see in italics, these three are the model policies of the MASC. So there is policy IMD, which is school ceremonies and observances. Policy JBB, which is educational equity, and then policy IJR, which is reconsideration of instructional resources. Is there discussion questions around those three policies? Maya?
If we could just talk about the first one, the school ceremonies and observances. I really liked the MASC language. I was concerned about the suggested edit. I wasn't really sure how it improved upon the policy and it seemed like it might be a potential stumbling block because there's a statement that we would not celebrate one religious or culture, like one, I'm sorry, not religious, cultural holiday, we would not celebrate one more than others. And I, like, I don't even know how many we, others would there be? I mean, is there a list that if you celebrate, you know, one cultural holiday, that you then have to do these like 35 others? I mean, I think it could be a really large number. So I just, I was concerned about adding that language.
Yeah, thank you, Maya. And just so everybody knows where we're looking in the document, it's in the paragraph that starts music programs. And it's in italics identified it. And actually, Dr. Wyeth, it was your recommendation, so I don't know if you want to speak more to it, but the sentence Maya is bringing up says, "Nor public schools will balance recognition and celebration of different cultural holidays and not celebrate one more than others." But Dr. Wyeth, you're muted.
The reason I suggested that, I think, was that whenever, you know, Kathy or whoever decides what to do for Christmas holiday music, for instance, she tries to balance that out with other cultural form, you know, other music, cultural musical scores. So the rule of thumb is in school law is that if you're going to celebrate one religion, you have to celebrate the others. You know, you, you can't favor one over the others. And so either you strike it completely and say there will be no celebration of religious holidays, or you've got to be very clear that if you celebrate one, you've got to celebrate the others equally.
I would say that that's not exactly what I've seen happen. I think that when we talk about like, you know, concerts that happened in December, we focus on the holidays that are happening in December and early January. But the way this is written, it makes it sound like, well, if we did something that acknowledged, was sort of like associated with a Christmas tradition, not only would we have to do Hanukkah, but we'd have to do Diwali and we'd have to do I don't even know what all the, the entire list is, but I feel like if you talked about every cultural holiday, you'd be talking about dozens.
Right. Well, I think that, I think that it's the cultures that are represented in the community have to be respected. So it, you know, you may not have to celebrate every holiday depending on your community makeup. You know, but you're right. It, it opens a can of worms. And that's the, that's the dilemma, because if one is recognized more than others, then people have a right to complain.
Can we just cut that shorter and say, you know, "Nor public schools will work to balance recognition and celebration of different cultural holidays, period?"
I like that language.
Who's got the history in the back?
Thank you, Dr. Wyeth.
Sorry, that's my fan.
So if we just said, "Nor public schools will balance recognition and celebration of just different cultural holidays, period." Dr. Thompson, that's what you said? Maya, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I just feel like that isn't setting a trap for ourselves. And, and I certainly, I, I like endorse that, that mentality and I, I think that that's really an important thing. I just think like, if you set it up that you will never celebrate one more than the others, I just, I want, I, as a teacher, I would wonder, okay, what are the others? Like, what's my whole list? I have to check off every single box and I don't know what that list is. And so I just worry that it would mean we did none ever.
What is the process right now? Maybe there isn't one, maybe there needs to be one, because, you know, policy then gives birth to procedures and, and process. What happens right now, Dr. Wyeth and Dr. Thompson, in determining what is that music sun at holidays and what type of play and, and everything this policy is about in celebration and observances? How are teachers guided and, and know what is that they're, that we're asking them to do or not do?
Yeah, so I think, I think in what, because I've talked with Kathy Mowen about this before. And I think what she tries to do is to balance the major religions and their holiday celebrations as best as possible. You know, so she makes sure there's some, you know, you know, music representing the Jewish traditions, the Christian traditions. And, you know, I think, well, I don't know what else, you know, I'd have, you'd have to sort of see what her typical music score is. But the musical repertoire is for the holidays. But I know she's very conscious about that and, and tries to balance it. Yeah, so you'd almost need to sort of get, get a list of the specific musical product, you know, musical scores that she uses and, and check the backgrounds on that. You know, I just, I'm particularly sensitive to the conversation that was had earlier. And the fact of the matter is that teachers probably ought to know the cultural backgrounds of their kids and somehow be respectful of those backgrounds. Similarly, we should do the same for our, our, any of our productions, you know, for our student body. And, you know, does it complicate things? Yes. But is it right? Probably.
Yeah. Sorry, I just wanted to respond to what Dr. Wyeth said and then you can definitely comment more. I mean, this is not like official feedback, but I, I have been having some conversations with community members and families in the district. And I, I do hear a lot at the elementary level that a lot of elementaries feel that the month of December somehow still becomes largely about Christmas. And a lot of the crafts and the music and, and just the activities center around Christmas. So I, I think definitely important to have like that will balance it. And I do understand, Dr. Wyeth, why you are saying not to celebrate one more than the other. And then I also understand, Maya, what you're saying about how, what, what, what exactly does that mean and how do we put that into action? So I don't have the answer. I hear both sides. And I, you know, we'll talk them a little bit about like the North schools listen. And if we do that initiative and we send out a survey, we will get, I'm sure, a lot of feedback of specifics. But I have heard from elementary parents across the district in particular that the month of December tends to be Christmas heavy in what's happening in the schools. But Maya?
So I just wanted to say, like, I am not, I'm totally in favor of like, everybody considering these issues when they're choosing programs, when they're choosing activities. I'm not saying we shouldn't. I'm, I love the idea of us reflecting the community and, but I just worry that that language doesn't say it needs to reflect the student body. It just says you won't celebrate one more than the others. And like, I just don't know what that list of others is. What's, you know, and I just worry that that kind of sets a trap for us that if there's some obscure religious holiday that we were unaware of, suddenly we are, you know, violating our own policy.
Dr. Thompson or Joan, not to put you like, you know, on, on the spotlight, but since you worked with me as the subcommittee like on these policies and we've talked about it, anything coming to mind for you in regards to this language?
For me? I, I am reluctant to change mass language unless there's a really good reason. So sorry, Dr. Wyeth, I understand the, the point behind it, but I believe that the mass language has generally come to us having been proofed by people who have a lot of experience with litigation. And I, I generally, I think that the mass language is inclusive and it has been fact-checked and it will not get us into trouble. But instead, we'll continue to push the district forward in terms of being culturally responsive or at least setting the precedent for, for, I don't want to say cultural equity, because I don't think we're not there yet. But I do think it represents a really good step forward. And I'm not sure that messing around with their language benefits us entirely is really where I'm at.
Other thoughts, suggestions for this policy in particular, the one around ceremonies and observances? So what would the committee like to do? Because I'm hearing different things. One is to keep it as presented to us tonight, which includes the full sentence that Dr. Wyeth had recommended. The second is to modify it, as Dr. Thompson had recommended. And then the third would be to strike that sentence that's in italics. So what is the, the will of the committee for this policy?
I could also, I would also be okay with the modified.
I would say modified or struck, but not, not the entire statement. I think that's going to get us into trouble.
Okay. Somebody want to make an official motion?
I'll make the motion.
To keep it, "Nor public schools will balance recognition and celebration of different culture holidays, period?"
Correct.
Okay. So Dave made that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Anne Marie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So that is IMD, school ceremonies and observances. Any feedback, questions on JBB, the educational equity? Is everybody comfortable with how that one is written in our packet? Is there a motion to approve that one? Joan?
Oh, I was going to ask, I was going to raise a similar issue with adding cultural competence into that particular policy. Which I'm trying to find right now, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay. So it's under, in order to reach the goal of
No, it was, it was my tabs.
So the MASC language was, "The district shall seek to promote educational equity as a priority in professional development." And more than one of the administrative team suggested that we add in cultural competence. So seek to promote educational equity and cultural competence as a priority in professional development.
To me, it comes, it comes back down around the definition of what is cultural competence? And what are we doing to achieve that versus creating what we have below is creating, endeavor to create schools with a welcoming, inclusive culture and environment. So it's cultural competence to me has a higher standard. I'm not necessarily opposed to that. Again, it's the same type of thing where are we, can we guarantee that we are going to promote cultural competence starting tonight? Because once we do, once we approve that policy, we are.
Well, I think that as a school committee, if we decide that we are approving this and we are, if we decide to set that high standard, then our administrative team would have to figure out how to do it. I mean, there's also the fact that you want your policy and your budget to align. Like you don't want to enact policies if you're not able to do the things, you know, fiscally that you say is important to you. I mean, this, this, that, that, those extra words, the cultural competence, again, I'll have to go back in my notes, but I know it was more than one administrator that had recommended that be added there. And I think they felt that these are areas we're already looking at, but I don't want to speak for the administrative team. I mean, Dr. Thompson, what's, what's your feedback?
I mean, it's just, I mean, it's something we're grappling with and defining anyways, so I don't think it's giant lift, but we have so many lifts right now. It's, it's when we, when we can get to that, so.
Yeah, I, I think you could make the argument that that's part of a policy around educational equity is, you know, in order to, to achieve educational equity across the board, you know, our staff need to be culturally competent, you know? But I mean, this policy is titled educational equity, so I can understand why Joan is kind of saying what she's saying, that this kind of clutters it up a little bit, you know, with, with another dimension for professional development maybe. But I kind of see them as pretty closely tied together. In order to achieve educational equity, you're going to have to have a culturally competent teaching force, I would think, but
Yes, yes, Alec, and that actually demonstrates it perfectly. I view this policy as relating to having educational equity for our students. And what I'm reading that as is our students will be culturally competent. Those, and those to me are two different, that's a different threshold for two different things. I agree that to have, to achieve educational equity within our school system, our staff has to be culturally competent, but that doesn't mean that our students have to be culturally competent. And I know that's a fine distinction. Where you put your resources, it's a, it's a very different, who are you educating basically as a result of this policy and, and getting educational equity? I view this policy as saying we're going to make our students culturally competent. And I'm not sure that we have the resources to do that. I feel bad because now I, this is something that I actually really care about, but I just don't know if it's realistic.
Yeah. So Joan, to that point, I'm already talking about student or staff. I mean, the way I read that sentence in particular, you know, it says that we're seeking to promote educational equity and cultural competence as a priority in professional development. So to me, that reads just very staff-heavy. I, I wasn't reading at least that sentence as the students. Yeah, Maya?
Um, I, I actually am not against having the language in there, but I also, I absolutely agree with Dr. Wyeth that the best way to promote educational equity is to have increased cultural competence or, you know, make sure that we're focusing on the cultural competence of the staff. So in some ways, I think that that is then redundant language. It's unnecessary. It's like, it's clear that if we're saying our priority is educational equity and making that a priority in professional development, then obviously we're going to have to do cultural competence. And so there's kind of no value in adding that to the language.
Yeah, other thoughts? Yeah, Dave, time it?
Yeah, I think, Alec, your microphone is making some static.
Oh geez, sorry. Yeah.
Oh, thank you. Right. So I'm fine with the language the way it is. And in terms of the policy, I think that like, it's, it's good to have in the policy. You know, I think that it's, it's something we're implementing. It's going to take time. It's a goal. It's, it's something we have to work on and, and keep getting better at. But, you know, there's no reason we shouldn't put it in now, even if we're not there yet. Because I mean, it's a big ass cultural competency, you know, it's, it's a, it's, it's a goal. It's, it's what we want to achieve. It's what we have to do. You know, it's important, you know, for society. It's just, I don't think we can skimp on it, you know? But, you know, the, the idea that it's going to happen tomorrow, no, it's going to take a continuous improvement, you know? So we just have to be aware and have the policy and something we keep pushing forward with.
So is there a motion on this policy?
I would motion to approve.
As written with the cultural competence added in?
As written and as I understand it, it is focused on the teachers and the teachers will hopefully communicate that to the students.
Is there a second on that motion?
A seconded.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good discussion, Joan. I'm just picking on you because you were the first one to say aye. But honestly, no, sincerely, it was a good discussion. I didn't mean that to be catty or something. So the third So the third brand new policy is IJR, which is reconsideration of instructional resources. And I don't think this one had any additional, yeah, no, there's, there's nothing that was added in by the administrative team. They just all supported it as written. So the policy we have in front of you is the MASC policy. So discussion on this one?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Maya. Was there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dave. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. So all three of these will go on our website. I will ask Priscilla to work on that tomorrow. And then we will put it back on our agenda for August 5th, so that there is time for the public to review and offer a comment. But then we can vote on it again, all three of these on August 5th. So the last area of policy that we wanted to look at, and Joan is going to take us through this part of the discussion. There are six policies that had very minor updates from the MASC. We only have to vote on these once because they're already existing policies. But Joan, do you want to guide us through these?
I'm actually going to ask if anyone has any questions about the changes for all six. I'm wondering if I can propose that we approve all six at once?
Yeah, as long as nobody has any, you know, certain policy that they want to highlight and discuss.
Okay, just so folks at home know what we're talking about, we are talking about an academic freedom policy, curriculum development, curriculum adoption, instructional materials, community resources, speakers, and evaluation of instruction programs. The summary of changes were things like changing names so that they reflect the updated nomenclature, such as using words like state and Commonwealth, changing human resources to community resources. So very minor word changes that were essentially updating language to match current offices or kind of like common, commonly used language that's currently in existence. So I would like to propose that we move to adopt all six as written in your packets.
A second? Thank you, Maya. Oh, Dr. Wyatt?
No, that's all right. I can come in after you make the motion.
Okay, well, I think Joan made the motion, Maya had seconded it, but was there something that you wanted us to discuss?
Well, yeah, I, I think I'd like to get a little clarification, if I could, on the curriculum development piece. So you want to include and gathering input from the community?
Hold on, let me pull that.
No, that's a remove, I think.
Well, it says it was removed from the 2003 version. So are you suggesting it stay removed or that it be added back in?
Hold on, I'm trying to find my notes.
You're talking about IGA, curriculum development, Dr. Wyatt?
Yeah, yeah.
That is, um, that has been added in.
Yeah, I think we need to talk about that because that, that could really complicate curriculum development. I mean, we develop curriculum every summer with committees of teachers, and so what's intended here? I mean, curriculum really is the purview of the educational professionals. I kind of get that, you know, it's nice to get input around some things, but everything, you know, that's, that's going to be problematic, I think.
Give me just a second. Or you, I'm, I'm looking at my notes. I heard what you're saying. I'm looking, I'm trying to find my notes. That doesn't mean nobody else can talk.
Okay, Joan, I was just looking up to, um, I, I, so the 2003 version that is currently in our policy manual has the gathering input from parents and community. The 2019 update that we
Does not have it, sorry.
Yeah, takes that out. So I think MASC addressed your concern already, Dr. Wyatt, but that's important to clarify.
Yeah, yeah, right, okay.
So do you have any questions or concerns, anything else, Dr. Wyatt?
No.
Okay. So is everybody on the same page with that document, with, with that policy then? Okay, so all, stumbling over my words over here tonight, guys. So all in favor of approving these six policy updates as, as they are in our packet? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. And again, because these were already existing policies, they do not have to go on our website for comment, uh, community feedback, we will just update them in our policy section and in our policy manuals. And then, Dr. Wyatt and Dr. Thompson, if you could, just let all the administrators know that, you know, I say thank you for their help because they did review all of these before it went into the school committee packet, and I appreciate their feedback. Okay, so moving right along, under new business is an initiative that we're calling Norwood Schools Listen. And this idea came out of a policy subcommittee meeting with, with Joan and I as we were working on these policies and as we were reviewing some guidance that we've gotten from MASC. Also, this stems from the resolutions, the anti-racism resolutions that we signed as a committee on June 17th. So what you have in your packet is a rough draft of a very rough timeline and also some draft survey questions that we worked on with the administrators. All the administrators reviewed this and offered some feedback as well. Our attorney reviewed the document. We did just get the feedback back from the attorney very late this afternoon. I was hoping they get it before that, but unfortunately just came in this afternoon. So I did send you Melissa Murray's email and her guidance late this afternoon around 3:30. But we wanted to at least get this conversation started around a Norwood Schools Listen initiative and survey, hopefully, parents and students and staff around diversity, equity, and inclusion. So I know the document is quite lengthy. Dr. Thompson, is there anything that you would like to share before we take questions and comments?
No, I mean, this is, this is, this is something that, that we need to, we need to start the process. We are, um, I don't want to say blocked, but we are, we're juggling, obviously, you know, our reopening work with all this. But it definitely is work that needs to be done and work that we need to at least start engaging in, so. But I do think that that, that the timeline does, you know, is, is cards of, of those challenges while still trying to move us forward. So that's, that's all I understand.
So what are the thoughts, comments from the committee as you read this proposed initiative and timeline? Dave?
Hi, so nothing about the, the content of it, which is phenomenal, just being somebody that's really somebody that hates taking surveys, this seems really lengthy, and I don't want anybody to not do it because of the length. So I don't have a solution, because everything seems extremely relevant. But I'd just be curious how long would it take somebody to fill in? I'd hate for somebody to skip it if they, the pressure of life, they don't want to go through every, you know, their 41 questions here. That's my only not constructive feedback, unfortunately.
Yeah, I hear, I hear what you're saying. Maya?
Um, so I, I echo Dave's concerns, and I think that when we did the school start time survey, when we did the school budget information survey, we learned that, you know, it can just be overwhelming to, to tally this information. And so I think we want to make sure that we're really thoughtful about what questions we're asking and who we are asking them of to make sure that we're using, like, that we're going to find the information that we really know what, that we find useful, that we can do something with. And, and so some of the questions, like, there's a question in your child's school, members of the, of diverse communities appear in, pictures within posters, posters around the school, displays of student work, materials used in the classroom. I think those are all super important things, and I think they're great items for like a checklist for our, our teachers to remind them that they need to be mindful of these things when they're choosing that. As a parent myself, I have no idea. I don't think most high school parents would be able to give you useful feedback on whether or not the pictures in my students' classrooms include diverse members of communities, because I have been in those classrooms for approximately two minutes in the last year. And so I just worry that some of these questions, I'm not sure that the, you're going to get necessarily really high-quality data from them, and so maybe, um, maybe it would make more sense to start, well, first of all, I think some of these questions really do belong in either the student survey or the teacher survey, but not necessarily in the parent survey. Or maybe it's different at different levels, although I, I don't, even at the elementary level, I don't know. I mean, especially since nobody's been in the school since March. And so, um, maybe it might make more sense to start with some open-ended questions, allowing some people to provide some, like, open it up, see who wants to throw out feedback, and maybe once we see some of the first responses, then maybe that could help us target the right questions to ask in a more, um, like, quantitative form, like, you know, do you strongly agree, agree, disagree with this particular statement? But I just think these do get really detailed, and I personally feel like I wouldn't be able to offer you any useful feedback on this, because I just don't know. I, you know, as a high school parent, I'm not that involved in what my child is learning on a day-to-day basis.
Yeah. Other thoughts? I'm, I'm just listening and, and hearing at, at this moment. What else? Is everyone else thinking? Emery?
Well, I was going to say the same thing, even, even as an elementary parent. I know probably more than I did about my high school senior, for, for sure, but, you know, even then, I'm, I'm a working parent, you know? I'm not in the classroom. I don't volunteer in the classroom, and I see what comes home, but, you know, without having a video camera on the teacher in the classroom all day, I have no idea, you know, how much they're diving into cultural diversity. I can ask my child and hope that I'm getting the full story, but you know, elementary kids, like, they forget five minutes after they got home what they ate for lunch. So I think it's, it's, yeah, I think the length of it, I agree with David, that, that, you know, the length of it was pretty impressive. It's, I think you're trying to get a lot of really great information. I think that's, um, clear, that it's, you know, this would give us a whole fabulous insight if people would take the time to fill it out and if they have the knowledge. And I think that's, that's the problem, if we could pare it down to the things that we know parents should know and maybe make it just a little more digestible, even just from parsing out all that data that we're going to get.
Yeah. So, um, in full disclosure, like, what you see is, is basically my work. And, yeah, it, it, it was a lot of work. It was a lot of work to research, and it was a lot of work to draft, and it's been a lot of collaboration with the administrators and the attorney, and so I hear what you're saying. This ideally, in my opinion, should be something that we hire a consultant to do. And there are companies that do this. I don't think, A, we have it in the budget, and I don't think, B, we, because diversity, equity, and inclusion is such a hot topic right now, I think that the companies who do this are, are very booked, and I think we would have to wait a while. So I don't think it's realistic for those two reasons, timeline and, and resources to bring in a company. But there are companies that do this. So what I spend a whole lot of time doing is reading a bunch of diversity, equity, and inclusion surveys and polling questions that I saw showed up in more than one survey, that were like consistent questions. The student survey that you have in front of you tonight, that is basically almost verbatim. I could go back in my notes later and tell you what's not, but almost verbatim, what is from Desi's vocal survey, which Cindy Derain had suggested I looked at and told me that the vocal survey our students already take when they take the MCAS. And the reason she recommended this is because obviously there were no MCAS this past school year. But these are questions that I'm assuming, correct me, Dr. Wyatt or Dr. Thompson, if I'm wrong, but I'm assuming because students have taken them in other school years, we could do a trend analysis if we wanted to, year over year. And these are questions that they will take again whenever we take MCAS again. So the student survey is almost verbatim from, from Desi's vocal survey. And then what I was thinking, and I'm totally open to your feedback on this, but whenever you do a survey and you survey different stakeholders, although different stakeholders can provide different perspective and feedback in different areas, you also want to be able to compare across your different stakeholders. So I was aiming to have questions similar to the parents and staff and the students, knowing and anticipating that we might not get the same level of response or the same degree of feedback from each population. But I also think there might be some parents who do know very well that a certain demographic is not being represented it. That, you know, maybe I'm not aware of, that isn't on my radar. And the administrators, the feedback that I saw, and Dave and Alec, correct me if I'm wrong, they actually really latched on to that question and wanted that question asked.
I, I think what it comes down to, though, is what is the goal, right? What do we want to know? And making sure that we whittle this down to what we absolutely need to know now, because I hear you, I would love to see trend analysis. Right? And we talked about this, but like, who's, we're not going to be, we, we can't do the trend analysis. Who's going to do this, right? And so it's like, what do we, what do we want to know right now? And then what do we want to know post-pandemic? And that's not to put one thing on top of another, but, you know, Dr. Wyatt was saying at the beginning of this conversation, at the beginning of this meeting, like, point out where in the curriculum we're falling down, right? So for me, that would be a question. We could make an immediate impact on that, and you could leave that open-ended and see, and that would be a question you could do across, right? So for me, I would, I just want to see us kind of narrow it down a little bit into stuff that we know that we can, the, that we know that we can make an, an impact on immediately. So like the low-hanging fruit. And maybe I'm naive in thinking that curriculum is low-hanging fruit, but to me, it seems easier to, you know, add a more diverse canon of books into the English, into the English curriculum or into our libraries than it is to solve systemic racism in the year of the pandemic, right? Like, maybe systemic, maybe we start with impacting the curriculum and then move to systemic racism in the following year, you know, or this is the year that we do implicit bias training, because that's what comes up in the survey as being indicated, so.
Yeah, Maya?
Sorry, it took me a minute to unmute. So, no, I definitely agree with you that there may be some parents who will be very aware of, like, I've been in my daughter's classroom and I've noticed that there's nobody, you know, in the photos. But that's why I'm thinking it makes sense to ask some open-ended questions, to say, you know, are there, you know, and maybe the question is, do you have recommendations to make this, the classroom more welcoming for your student? Instead of asking every class, every, every parent to go through and rate the classroom on diversity in these eight categories at four or five different levels, I just don't think you're necessarily going to get informed opinions on that. But I think if you ask an open question, ended question, then that, for those students, those parents who are concerned and have particular knowledge, because maybe they've noticed something, then that's a great way for them to bring it up and for us to be able to see that. And then that could, and that could be the first step, and that could inform then a chance to ask a more detailed question than in the next round. I, I just think maybe we don't want to think about this as, this is the one survey we do. We want to think about, like, this is our, our first, you know, we want to open up some sort of forum to get some initial feedback. And then maybe there's another survey that comes out, multiple surveys that come out throughout the year that kind of each focus on different pieces. And then hopefully we'll, you know, get more comfortable as a survey monkey and figure out ways that, so that when we ask questions about, like, you know, how do we tease this apart? eh, you know, how do we tease this apart so that we can look at this and say, like, if parents are saying that they're, that people of diverse backgrounds are not recommend, are not reflected in classroom posters, is that at all district, all schools, or is it at one or two schools? And but like, that takes, um, a certain level of, um, analysis of the of the survey results, because you you do ask the questions in here to say, like, which school are you talking about? And then you ask this question, but I just think if we're using like Google Forms, it's gonna be a nightmare to try and tease out that that detailed data, so we need to figure out really, like, be really thoughtful about what kinds of things, what kinds of detail might we wanna pull out of this? And and what's the right tool to ask it? And I I do think Dr. Thompson's right, that Survey Monkey is gonna be better, but I'm no expert in how to to set it up so that it's easy to pull out that specific data.
Yeah, I mean, as I was drafting this, um, so the survey that we did for the school start times, um, largely landed in my in my lap and has been a little bit of a nightmare experience. Um, as Dr. Thompson already knows, I have a little bit of PTSD from having to run pivot tables. So as I drafted these questions, um, whoever is the person in charge of data analysis will not be me, but as I was drafting it, I very much had that in mind, that I wanted it to be asked in a way, because Google Forms, it's not great, it's it's really not. But I do think that you could take, the way that it's set up right now, you can take it, you can dump it into Excel, and somebody else can separate it much easier than the way that we ended up doing with the school start time. So I was trying to be cognizant of of that setup. Not that I have all the answers here, I don't, but I but I was trying to think of what questions do we need to ask so that we can, exactly as you're saying, MFC, is this an issue at every single school or one school in particular? Because that's how the status is gonna be helpful, if we can really figure out what level, is it across the district, is it a certain school? If we can't get down to those details, then we, we're just not gonna be as effective in implementing change. But, um, I, I'm not, yeah, go ahead, Dave.
Uh, just wanna say thank you, really appreciate what you did. It's it's a tremendous amount of work that you did, and and I recognize and appreciate it. So I just, I think probably looking back at what I said, I want all the information, I want it to be actionable, just we gotta figure out a way to make it convenient and bite sizable for somebody to fill in the survey. I want the data, I think we can use the data, absolutely, I just gotta figure out a way that we can get people to take the test. Um, so, is it, is it breaking it up? You know, is it, is it prioritizing what's important? But, um, the work you did is exceptional, and, uh, you know, I I hear the frustration in your voice that you did all this work wrong while going, ah!
I'm just exhausted. Anything you hear in my voice is exhaustion combined with a migraine right here that won't go away as I'm talking to you. It's it's not frustration to the feedback, please don't take it that way.
But thank you, thank you so much for doing this.
No, thank you for saying that. And I and I clearly opened to feedback, I just have a million different things based on this one thing, like, running through my mind as as you're talking. And, you know, it's also hard that I can't communicate any of the, you know, any of this to you until we're like here in a public meeting. So you don't know everything that's already been researched and thought about. Um, ultimately, I want this, and I think, you know, Joan is a subcommittee, and Dr. Thompson, the conversations that I had, and and the administrators, like, we believe in this work, and I think everybody here is saying the same thing, and we want it to be effective. So if there's something about the way that it's set up is not going to be effective or efficient, we need to figure out how to make it sell.
Yep.
That's right.
Yeah, if I I've been listening to the conversation, I think Maya and and David are are probably correct in terms of the length of the survey. And I think if you can narrow it down to a couple of essential, the essential questions to start with and then follow it up, that makes a lot of sense to me. Um, I mean, we're trying to do that with our current staff surveys and faculty surveys, in fact, you know, we're very conscious of not having these things be very long, because you're gonna get poorer, uh, a poor return rate if it's too long. And you want a good return rate, you know, so, um, I think, yeah, that that would be my my recommendation is to winnow it down to some core questions that you can then build off of in subsequent surveys. You know, and and I can give you some feedback, you know, on maybe which questions and stuff, but I haven't had a chance to do that yet, you know.
Yeah, so I guess my question based off of that and the feedback so far, sorry, is who, how do we wanna decide who, because it does not need to be me, and I don't want it to be me, who is determining how we're editing these questions? Yeah, Joan?
So I I'd like to make a recommendation that because we do have so much quantitative analysis from the vocal study for the students, that we actually narrowed that one down to qualitative, because what that will do is actually fill in the gaps of our quantitative data, will get the stories behind that quantitative data. Um, so that would be one recommendation for the student survey, would be to use the vocal data that we have for years past, especially given how much of the fact that we are likely going to be remote. Um, you know, and this upcoming year is gonna skew the data a little bit, um, but I would like to see us move to a qualitative for the vocal, um, for the student survey, to kind of fill in what we know from the quantitative. I'm just repeating myself at this point, sorry.
So following up on that really quickly, uh, Dr. Thompson, Dr. Wyatt, because I don't know. Um, I only know about the vocal from a conversation that I had with Ms. Derain and and what she told me about it. Do we have easy access to past surveys? And is that across the board, or is that really just a high school thing? On on the Dussie page, it looked like anybody taking MCAS, but I don't know enough to intelligently answer that question.
Yeah, and I'm not really sure myself, you know, accessing that data. I'll have to check with, um, Cindy Derain and see if that, something that was captured somewhere. Um, but I'm not sure, yeah. It's a good question, you know. I mean, it was something that was posted in, so I I imagine they do have it, each principal should, if they had their kids fill out that survey that was part of the MCAS test that was delivered, supposedly delivered to do the, to them through the security portal, so they should have that, um, uh, accessible. Um, I know some principals couldn't find their survey data, but, um, Donna Brown had some trouble, I think, but. Um, so we can look into that. And see, see if that's retrievable, yeah.
Sorry.
No, take it, Amory.
We, do we know that, like, all the way down to, like, elementary has taken the vocal survey in the past? I'm just reading through some of the questions, and I just cannot, my fourth grader actually.
Yeah, I think last year was the first year for the the vocal survey. I don't recall it in previous years, they may have piloted something in previous years, but it would be just a pilot.
Yeah, um, I can send all of you the the link, um, it's I don't find the Dussie website all that user-friendly sometimes, just to fully put that out there, maybe it's just me, but I have a really hard time finding things.
You really have to use the search engine on it to have any, any luck.
So what I have in front of me on the Dussie website that I will send all of you, so you can research and see if you can find other things, um, it says vocal is an annual survey sponsored by Dussie. It is administered to students in grades four, five, eight, and ten. And then they have like a rubric of the three dimensions and the nine topics of school climate. Um, so the three, um, dimensions are engagement, safety, and environment. And then the topics are cultural competence, relationships, participation, emotional safety, physical safety, bullying, instructional environment, mental health environment, and discipline environment. And I think you see all of that come up, you know, in those questions that you have in front of you, like, those are the areas, um, that they are focused on. Um, it looks like you can search for grade-level profiles, but I, again, I had a really hard time navigating, um, and then what Cindy, Cindy had sent me, like, the questions that she had through Dussie, um, and that's what you see in front of you. Um, but again, I do find the Dussie website to be not user-friendly, so there could be something there that I don't know is there.
I was just also curi, just curious if there was language for, you know, um, younger students, um, to make it a little more, because I'm just looking through some of the wording of these questions, and of course, my high school student wouldn't completely get this, but, you know, my rising fourth grader would probably look at it cross-eyed and be like, what are they trying to ask? So I don't know how useful that information would be, so that's something else to think about, is, you know, the audience that, you know, we're trying to get this information from. And I'm just interested that if Dussie would have presented these questions exactly as is to like a fourth grader.
That, that's a really great question, I can see if I can find something, um, you know, I I will tell you, as I was writing this, I was quizzing my own children and just seeing, like, do you even know what I'm asking? And and definitely my, my, you know, going into eighth grader, um, had a different level of understanding than my going into fourth grade. So I do, I do hear you. So how would you like this work to proceed at this point? Um, you know, taking notes of things that people are raising, it sounds like Dr. Wyatt, and I should definitely talk a little bit more about some questions. But in terms of editing questions, in terms of things to go back to the board, either with the attorney or the administrators or as a subcommittee, um, just help me have clear action steps for what we want to do next. You do hear me, right? I'm not muted.
Sorry, I fell into the the report, um. Yeah, the Dussie, what, all I have to say is the Dussie website makes it seem like I should absolutely be able to find this in this Excel spreadsheet, but I can't.
Right?
I think what, I think what we need is, we need for, I I think there's a difference of opinion around. Teresa, you and I, we know that we have a difference of opinion around, like, how to go forth doing this. So, um, I think it would be helpful if the committee kind of weighed in about what they thought would be the most helpful to see, like, what are the maybe top five, um, areas that you'd want us to kind of hone in on, so that we can present another version um, of this? Right, I mean, does that make sense, Teresa? I don't know if that makes sense to you, but like,
Yeah, I mean,
Can we get, like, maybe priorities?
Yeah, my my angle honestly is help, let's help this be as effective and efficient as possible, um, just selfishly in my own time. Um, but just also for the district, that this is something that we, you know, we all believe in. Um, so, yeah, if we can bring it down to priorities or any action steps, that it's not gonna be done for the twenty ninth, I can tell you that already, because I'd have to have it in the packet by Friday. Um, but Maya?
So I I think one thing is, I understand our focus at this point to be on the diversity and inclusion. So I would say, why don't we remove all the bullying related? I think that, um, it's certainly important, but but that's kind of a separate topic. Um, but I would love to see, eh, you know, I mean, I know the problem is, of course, if you get open-ended answers, then it just means you have to read every single answer, and it really depends on how many we think we're gonna get, right? If we think we're gonna get thirty-five hundred responses, then we don't wanna ask five open-ended questions and be left with reading five times thirty-five hundred answers. But given that it's, it's not the school year right now, and a lot of people are focused on other things like reopening and and things like that, I I think maybe if we came up with kind of five open-ended questions, saying, you know, does your, in, you know, can you, are there things that the schools could be doing to make your child feel more welcome at school? Or, you know, those sorts of questions? And, um, and like, put that out there and and, you know, try and encourage some people to answer it, and then start to look at that. Um, I don't know, what do you guys think? Do you guys think we're gonna get tons of responses, or do, I I suspect we're gonna get, you know, responses from the people who are most concerned about this, which is, I I think, um, and who feel that they have the most to say about this, and so hopefully, you know, it wouldn't be thirty-five hundred that we'd have to re- read through all at once, it would be, you know, the most motivated people and maybe start there.
So it sounds like it's curriculum, open, like, what I'm hearing so far, curriculum, open-ended, and environment. And narrowing it down. So are there other areas that the committee feels are important to collect data on?
I think, um, now I'm looking at the survey now, and I'm realizing, like, we also have to, I definitely think we need to start with all those questions, Teresa, that you were suggesting, like, what grade is your child in, what school does your child attend, what gender, you know, like, to to understand, you know, to be able to understand more about the the rest of the responses we see. But, um,
Uh, I'll ask this question, do we want to keep it focused on forward future things? So, um, questions around the, what do you suggest we do to make the, um, uh, environment more inclusive? Or are we concerned about understanding past environment? Has your child ever been made to feel uncomfortable in a classroom? Like, if we're gonna try to narrow it down, we, I feel like we have to kind of pick which, sorry, pick which path we wanna go down to know that.
That's a really great question, important question, because I think that impacts the work you do next. And I think it also impacts down the road. Are we surveying again, and what are we comparing? Yeah, that's that's a really important question. I mean, Dr. Thompson, do you have? What, what are your thoughts, and like, what what are you envisioning we get out of this, and what do we do with it?
Well, I mean, I I I'm looking at this first foray as kind of collecting data for us, for determining where we should best start our efforts. Not necessarily learning every single thing, but indicating whether, you know, our first priority should be working on implicit bias, should our first priority be, um, you know, curriculum that is marginalizing, uh, groups? Um, you know, that sort of information, uh, gives us a little bit more of direction so that we can prioritize, uh, the work that needs to be done. I mean, all of it needs to be done, but what is, what is causing the most discomfort, um, you know, in in our schools, and it might, it might turn out that it's all of it equally, um, you know, um, so that's, that's kind of how I'm I'm looking at this, um. Alec, you're, uh, you're actually, yeah, there you go.
Yeah, Teresa, let me ask this question, is this something that the, um, committee that spoke earlier, um, Progress Norwood is interested in sort of taking this bull by the horns, they might help us narrow it down a little bit to around a couple of major focus topics to start with?
Um, I mean, I I can't speak for them, um, I I've had a number of conversations with their cultural competency team throughout the last three years, just in general, with different things, I would imagine a lot of them would probably say yes, they would help. Um, but I'm I'm not gonna say they definitely would. I am, I I attended, one of the MASC webinars I attended at some point, every day blurs together right now, but some point this summer. One of the MASC webinars I was on was through their Minority Caucus, and, um, it was a really great, interactive, like, working group remotely session. And districts across Massachusetts were talking about these things. And I, and I do think this is more that we're gonna start to see across the state from different districts, so that kind of got me thinking about all of this, too. Um, and then again, just those resolutions that we signed on June seventeenth, um, you know, I know we all take them seriously. Um, but as soon as we signed that, especially since my name that I have to sign there, I was just feeling like a responsibility of, okay, we said we're gonna start to do this, now let's start to do it. And I certainly understand everything else that is is going on, um. And and part of what you see in the document, um, you know, that was Joan's idea of having like a listening period. You know, we were thinking that whatever survey we send, whether it's this one or a totally different version, um, that we start with that listening period, so that we we acknowledge there's work to do, we acknowledge our intent to focus, but we collect the data over the next two months, when everybody else in the district is still really obviously focused on reopening. And then from there, you know, you form a committee and and do a lot of work. Um, so, you know, there there was that discussion as a subcommittee on the listening period and the data collection period first.
So I I'd like to So I, I'd like to, can I make a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. No, it's like crap. I actually have to make one. Um, so I, I would like, I, I'm not making a motion. I'm going to kind of toss something out there for discussion. So what I, what I'd like to do is I'd like, would like to, in light of that, what I'd like to do is recommend that Teresa, you and I go back and take a crack at making this survey more qualitative and more forward-facing. Meaning what can, what can we do to kind of improve things even in the midst of a pandemic, right? Like what can we do right now? Um, and so focus on things that are within our control, even in our new, our new normal, which those are things like curriculum, those are things like representation, those are things like inclusion, right? Like we can, those are within our control. At the same time, I'd like to, um, take Dr. Wyatt up on his offer to get us the vocal and Dr. Thompson to get us the information about vocal and use that as a starting point, as an understanding of what the environment is. Um, and, and using that as our kind of environmental scan rather than the survey going out. And then I'd like to recommend that we take both of those two pieces of information together and use the vocal survey as the environmental scan and the forward-facing pieces of what we can do right now. And have the committee that we proposed that comes together in October, look at both of those pieces to make a recommendation to the school committee about how to move forward rather than charting the whole year. Or, or, you know, a mo, uh, we're essentially trying to chart a multi-year initiative tonight. And, and that's why we keep getting hung up because you're right, we want to do everything. We want to understand our environment. We want to understand the experiences that students are having. We want to fix it. But I, I just, it, it's so big that I'm having a hard time. So I guess my motion is, is that, um, I propose that we, um, make the, make the, the current listening period be, um, mainly qualitative in nature, short and focused on things that we can change, can change and control within our current pandemic planning. And at the same time, utilize our vocal, find our vocal results, investigate our vocal results and bring both of those things to a committee in October for recommendations for next steps. That was a long motion.
Longest motion ever. I second it.
Hopefully Donna got all that in the minutes.
It's being recorded. We can play it back.
Uh, but Dave, did you say you second it?
Absolutely. I cannot resist seconding the longest motion of all time. I love it.
Maya, did you have something that you wanted to share?
Oh, I, I really like this idea. I think it's, I think it's really important for us to think about like, you know, what our focus is and, you know, I think like focusing on what's forward-thinking right now is the way to go, which is not to say that there might not be another time that we do kind of ask some more retrospective questions, but I think I, I like Joan's focus for now. But I think another thing we need to think about ourselves as a community, as a committee and make sure we communicate to the community is who's going to have access to these results. It is something that our attorney said that we need to think about. And, you know, when Dr. Wyatt was suggesting that Progress Norwood, um, could maybe help with some of this, I, um, I'm interested in getting some feedback from members of the community like that on what questions we should be asking, things like that. But we need to be clear that we also have student privacy concerns and there may be some things here, you know, we need to think about what might come in and what we can, you know, we may not even, as a committee, may not be able to read all of these responses. Maybe this is more for the administration or we just need to kind of have that thought too, is who's going to read it? And what should we set the expectation for, um, the people who are going to fill this out? Are they going to expect that it's just read by teachers and administrators, or maybe just by administrators and not their students, classroom teacher? You know, we need to think about that.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, that, that's a valid point. And, um, again, I got Melissa Murray's, uh, email very late this afternoon. So I, I read it. I skimmed it. I have some notes, but I didn't fully digest it. And I told her, I'm sure we will have follow-up questions. Um, but she did say that you want to have one or two staff. And she emphasized staff, so, um, takes me out of this equation, even if I want it to be involved at that level. She did say a staff member, um, ideally an administrator or an HR director, which we don't have an HR director. So we're going to cross that off our list. Um, that it should be one staff person who really has the access to the data as it comes in, uh, to screen for exactly what you said, Maya, of any confidentiality. There, there's also liability here. If, um, people are expressing cases of bullying or harassment, we have a responsibility to follow up on those things. And Melissa addresses that, you know, in her email that we, you know, you can read and we can talk about it in another meeting. So we do want to be very careful about the process. Um, I will say that I'm really, I guess I just am seeing this in a very different way and, and I'm having a hard time with getting to the qualitative and forward first because I'm just seeing that as that comes next. Like you can't move forward if you don't know where you are. And, um, I just see the quantitative and what has happened so far and where are we as the foundation before we do the next? So I'm having a really hard time flipping my thinking. I'm trying. So I just want to put that out there. Um, I, I will support the work no matter what the committee decides, but I, but I am having a hard time starting with qualitative and forward before quantitative and where are we?
Yeah. Well, the vocal, if we can get the vocal data per Joan's suggestion, I think that, that'll give us the qualitative and it'll be sort of, um, our baseline. You know, kind of where, where are we currently, you know? Now, I, I do know one of the principals texted me and said that the, that vocals was a voluntary survey. So I'll be curious to see how many kids actually took it and, and how many schools, you know, got some data. But we'll, we'll, we'll get that information. I'll get that taken as.
All right, that'd be great. One other question just to the committee. So so far when we're talking about like the vocal, that's just student data. And, and there's still the parent and there's still the staff. I mean, are we saying that we don't want to survey parents and staff right now? Or are you saying you do, but more the qualitative, open-ended questions? Like what is the will of the committee in terms of those two populations?
Well, my proposal is that we let the committee in October point us to where we should be going with that stuff because they'll have both the vocal data and we'll know if it's robust or not. And we need to go do an environmental scan. Um, and we'll have the kind of forward, forward-thinking, um, recommendations from the community, which that's a triangulation right there, right? So, um, there is a triangulation that's going on in that space as well. So I'm, I'm not comfortable saying that I don't want to do either one of those things. I just don't know it, what is warranted at that point. And I'll be, and the other piece that, to be honest as well, um, is that if in December or October, we're all shut down and in a completely remote situation, I just, I don't see us having the bandwidth to, to, to do a full-on environmental scan, um, and to do the PD that, that is connected to, to that and this. Um, so.
Yeah, I, I hear that too. I just, I know this is nobody's intent. Please know that I know that, but I'm not comfortable personally saying to our students who may be impacted by things that are happening in our district that are causing any discrimination or bully or inequity, that I'm sorry, you have to wait. I just, I know that's not what any of you are saying, but I, I, I just can't be part of that message.
How, but Teresa, if we, if we put out the survey, it's going to take until February for us to do it anyway, because we just don't have the space or the bandwidth. I, I mean, I, I think a more productive way of doing that is to talk about, well, let's put some money aside and get somebody who can do this to do it. I think that's the better way of, of going after this personally. Let's work with Progress Norwood wants to partner with us. We know that the best way to get the best data is to hire a firm. Let's see if we can get a couple of thousand dollars from town meeting to do this.
Um, I know, I know Dave, you, Dr. Thompson, you had looked at Panorama a while ago, like two years ago. And I know we talked to them at the MASC, MASS conference. I cannot remember all about a ballpark number. Dr. Wyatt and Dr. Thompson, do you know ballpark?
I, I don't remember what that number was.
The cost for that?
Yeah.
Yeah, to bring something in to do it.
They're not inexpensive. I, I, for some reason, the, the figure eight thousand dollars for us doing the survey district wide sticks in my mind, but that could be completely wrong. Um, I know Shelley Berman in, um, Andover has used them. I can ask him what his costs were, but in, in fact, that may be where I got that figure too. So.
Yeah, I was thinking around ten grand. So that, that's in the ballpark. But again, I can't remember for sure. Um, how much research do all of you want to see? How much work of mine that I've done, do you feel like looking at? Because I can send you a ton, including a sixty-five page equity document that Needham did when Needham hired a consultant to come in and do all of this for them. And then had a beautiful document handed to them saying all of this. Here's your quantitative, here's your qualitative, here's where you are, here's where you need to go. Yeah, Maya.
Um, so you know, I'm a numbers person, so I definitely hear what you're saying about like the desire to want to have like a quantitative number about like where are we now? But I just, I don't think you're gonna get like quantitative, that information is only useful if people feel like they're really able to answer the question. And I just read many of these questions and I think if you're surveying parents and asking these forty-one questions, many parents are going to feel like they are not able to answer these questions. So they either won't answer any of them or they'll just throw, they'll be like, oh, whatever. They'll just click, agree, 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 agree. Because they don't feel like they have any. So I feel like I, my focus is on, like, I don't think that that's listening. I don't, if I, I like the idea of like, let's start with listening. I don't think that listening means asking forty-one questions and, and getting quantitative values. I think it means saying what things, you know, if there's a diversity, equity and inclusion committee starting this year, what things do you want us to focus on? Like let's get that feedback. Let's do the like brainstorming session at this point. And then, you know, once, if, if the, the vote is we need to focus more on, um, curriculum or if it's, we need to, like, we're not working well with our English language learners and their families and we need to do a much better job on translation services or like, or we just, um, you know, that students of color feel like no, they're not represented and they're, you know, like whatever the issue is, and then find something in that that we can focus on. And first, and then dive deeper in and get, like, figure out then who exactly do we need to ask the questions of? And what exactly do we need to ask? But a subset of these questions to focus on at a time so that we chunk it into things that we feel like we can kind of wrap our brains around.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, the, the, the other thing is some of the answers are not going to be actionable. Like one of the things that consistently comes up i- is that we need to find teachers who, who are representative of, of our students. I can tell you for the last two years, we have gone to colleges, we have gone to, uh, diversity fairs, looking for candidates. They are not there. They are not applying to Norwood. Part of that is you having to, you know, transportation, other things. There is a lack of, of candidates of diverse backgrounds in the pipeline. So that is not, that is something we have been working to try to improve. We have made some moves in, in that. Nowhere near getting to the numbers that are represented in our student population, but it's not for lack of trying. So there are going to be these things we are going to hear that we have been working on. I mean, you can't hire them if they're not there. And, and, and this is a systemic problem that is beyond the Norwood Public Schools. Um, and I've, and I've challenged the, you know, the, the legislature on that in that they need to come up with, I mean, basically people who want to work in schools are people who've been successful in schools. So it goes back another generation, you know, before, before we go here. And, and there are barriers in our higher education system to people of color succeeding and finishing and people of color going into a, in education to begin with. So until we solve those, that is one that we will continue to work on, but it's not a quick fix, folks. It, it's more systemic than that. And, and I think, yes, we need to listen and we need to understand and we need to start examining them, but it is not, for many of these, it is not a quick pivot. You know, there is also the fact that there are parents sitting at home that are right now, their heads are spinning worrying about how their kids are going to school in the fall. And, you know, are they going to engage in, you know, to the level we would like at this point? Probably not until, you know, the end of August, beginning of September, once those big questions right now are, are solved. But, um, you know, it doesn't mean you start, you know, and then come back in October and take another step in another direction either. This is, this is going to be a process.
So, um, Dr. Thompson, I just ask you a question. If we're now shifting this to more of a qualitative, um, again, just going back to my experience with the school start time data, what gave me the biggest headache? Who is going to be the person? And you don't have to answer tonight. You might need to, you know, talk to your staff and determine that before you just call them out. But who is going to be the person responsible for that data that is okay by our legal counsel? And has the ability to sit there and do the coding to compare qualitative data? Because if we don't have some type of coding system and we can't present it in a way that makes any sense, then all the feedback in the world isn't going to be helpful. So is there somebody, you don't have to say the name, but is there somebody that comes to mind that you think this is even a feasible ask, given a staff member's time? If we're shifting the survey to this format?
Do you want, do you want the honest answer? No, we don't, we don't have, we don't have the people to do that. It doesn't mean that we couldn't look at maybe a, a research assistant or someone along that line who, who wants to do that kind of work. You can kind of blind, blind some of the data. So it's not personal information before, before they get it. I have not used Survey Monkey myself since I did my own, uh, you know, dissertation, but, you know, it is, um, much more capabilities than, than what we're currently.
If somebody? Go ahead, Alec.
Um, yeah, so a couple of things coming to mind. We do have some people come forward as wanting to be administrative interns. I don't know if we've got anyone in the pipeline for next year, but there's someone in the pipeline now that we could ask and say if they want to take this on as a project. Um, and we could, we could provide a stipend, you know, at thirty-three dollars an hour. Uh, we could, we could probably manage that. The other thought is Joan, I mean, you've got a ton of research kids, you know? And, you know, the, the data privacy would be an issue, but most of these surveys are anonymous anyway. So I, you know, I don't know, quite know where the privacy would be violated. You know, you're going to know what school, the, the parent has a child in and what grade level, and that's about it, you know?
If you, if you can get somebody to redact the data, I believe I need to clear it with Northeastern, but I believe I can use our coding software. I mean, I'm, I teach coding. I could use our coding software and do it.
Why didn't you code the school start time survey?
I said I could. I, I don't think I was on the, um, was I on the committee then? I don't think I was on the committee then.
No.
I wasn't on the committee.
Yes, she was. We're part of it. And I know I vented to you. Okay.
So I can, I can, I can, I, I, I will have to verify that. I do not anticipate it will be a problem for the Graduate School of Education um, to assist a local school district, um, around, in, in a, in a graduate school of education with a bent for social justice um, to be, to, to loan, um, to allow me to utilize software that I already have access to, um, for this project. Um, but I, I will need to run it by my, uh, by my dean to just to make sure. I just have to declare the conflict of interest. Um, so if somebody, if Melissa is fine with me just getting the aggregate data, I can do that. If Melissa is more comfortable with that, she can also, we can also, if we could have somebody just run through it and redact names. That will, should clearly suffice for ethical considerations.
Yeah.
Okay. So there's a list of questions I have to follow up with Melissa. Um, what I would ask the committee as well, um, you know, review the stuff that I sent from her this afternoon or, you know, the next week if you can. And if there's further questions that that leads to, you know, what Dr. Thompson and I know. Cause we definitely want to make sure we have, you know, legal counsel and the right protocols in place. Um, I think, you know, Dr. Wyatt and Dr. Thompson have their list of, you know, looking up into vocal a little bit more, getting it better. What would it cost to bring somebody in to do this? Um, again, just let me know later how much of my research you want. I am happy to email you as many things as you want to take a look at. Or if anything in particular I referenced, you just want to see that. No. Joan and I will reconvene as a, uh, subcommittee. Again, this is not going to be done by the twenty-ninth, um, maybe August fifth, but I think unfortunately the timeline of starting this in August is which is very disappointing. Um, but I get it. which is very disappointing, um, but I get it, is probably being shifted back. Um, and then I I would just ask um Dave and Alec um update the administrators. I mean, maybe they're watching this and they already know. Um, but just kind of give them an update of how this is where the school committee is and um if they have feedback on anything we talked about tonight.
Yeah. Do you all have open-ended questions going? Because I think that I think uh having a handful of really well-designed, open-end questions will be a great place to start.
Yeah, um, I I would say, you know, to anybody um if you have suggestions, send it over to Dr. Thompson and then or or Dr. Wyatt, and then when Joan and I meet as a subcommittee, we can look at those suggestions. Um, I took a couple of notes tonight. There's a couple of open-ended questions already in the surveys that you have in front of you, so if you liked any of those, you know, let us know. Um, but the one thing I I did want to get the committees, I I think we're all there, but I just want to make it official. Are we all in agreement that starting this work, starting the Norwood Schools Listen and in the fall, having Dr. Thompson um organize a diversity, equity and inclusion committee? Are we all in agreement with that work?
Yes.
So I'm I'm gonna put forth, I'm not really supposed to put forth a motion, I guess, as a chair, but I'm going to in this case that that we are supportive of Norwood's Global Listen Initiative and we are asking Dr. Thompson to, in the fall, create a diversity, equity and inclusion committee. Um, is there a second on that motion?
Yes.
Thank you, Dave. All in favor?
Hi.
All right.
Great, wonderful. Anything else on this topic tonight?
No, it would be to death.
All right, thank you for a really great discussion and and feedback. And I totally lost our long-term or our our agenda for tonight on my computer. I have way too many tabs open, but I believe next is donations. Am I correct?
You are, and we have two donations. Um, one is um we had uh Making Masks in Norwood donate five hundred handmade cloth face masks for adults and children. And then the second one uh is our Bay State Textiles, and despite the shutdown, uh we still uh had donated textiles to the tune of five hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty cents.
Wonderful. Is there a motion to accept these donations?
So moved.
Thank you, Maya. Was there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you, Dave. All in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Hi, okay, so uh school committee addenda. Uh Joan, did you have anything this evening?
I do not have anything this evening.
Okay, uh Anne Marie?
Nope.
Dave Catania?
Uh, I think I'll save it for the next meeting. It's been long.
Maya?
Nothing tonight.
I don't have anything either. I talked to you all plenty. Um, but we do have to go back into executive session to finalize some of the conversations we started in executive session before this meeting. Um, so is there a motion to go into executive session? We will only um resume for the purpose of adjournment.
So moved.
Thank you, Maya. Seconded by Dave, and then I have to pull uh individually. So Joan?
So, yes.
Thank you, Anne Marie.
Yes.
David Tanya?
Yes.
Maya?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Uh, so thank you, everybody. To the public, we will see you again next Wednesday, July twenty-ninth at seven P M.